...out on May 7, 2020, adhering to the 48-hour notice. In addition, this hearing was noticed on the legislature's website at www.gwamlegislature.com. I will share with all of you that written testimonies, they may be submitted by emailing them to speaker@gwamlegislature.org, or you may hand-deliver it to our office at 163 Chalan Santo Papa, Hagatnya, Guam. And I want to share with you, ladies and gentlemen, that on the agenda this afternoon, we have the appointment of Robert C. Titelnoff to serve as the member... I apologize. I was supposed to wait for MIS. I am informed just now through my text messages. MIS, are you clear for me to go? I apologize. MIS? If I'm good? Okay, thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, again, on the agenda this afternoon, we have the appointment of Robert C. Titelnoff to serve as a member of the Civil Service Commission for a term length of six years to fill the unexpired term of Catherine Gao. Bill Number 255-35COR is introduced by Senator Jose Pito Terlahi and myself, which is an act to repeal and reenact Section 4301A and 4302C, both of Article 3, Chapter 4, Title IV, Guam code annotated, "to allow choice for subscribers that participate in the government of Guam health insurance contract." And the other bill is Bill Number 328-35COR, and this is introduced by my vice chair, Senator Kelly Marsh Titelnoff and Senator Jose Pito Terlahi, which is an act to add a new section, 4131, to Chapter 4, Title IV, Guam code annotated, "relative to authorizing administrative leave for first responders affected by disease outbreak." And joining me, ladies and gentlemen, this afternoon, my colleagues who are present with me. I have my vice chair, Senator Kelly Marsh Titelnoff. Thank you very much. I also have Senator Joe Sinagusti. I have Senator Pito Terlahi. I have Legislative Secretary, I apologize, Senator Amanda Shelton, and I think Committee on Rules Chair, Senator Lee. I also have the Vice Speaker that's joining us. Thank you, Vice Speaker. I apologize, didn't see you earlier. I also have Senator Therese Terlahi, Minority Leader Senator Telo Titegri, Senator Mary Torres, and Senator Will Castro. I hope I've mentioned everybody. And at this time... Thank you, colleagues, for joining me. I'm going to have some housekeeping measures here. We ask that those testifying abide by the following: to broadcast from a quiet room with little to no interruptions; to broadcast from a room with adequate lighting; especially to ensure that participant's face is visible and not backlit; to ensure that participant's face is visible at all times; and to use only respectable and professional language and conduct. Virtual backgrounds, ladies and gentlemen, and colleagues should not be utilized during public affairs. And I ask everyone to keep your audio on mute to be recognized. Please remain in the meeting room for any questions by my colleagues. And with that being said, we will now move on to the first item on the agenda, and that is the appointment of Mr. Robert C. Titelnoff to serve as a member of the Civil Service Commission for a term length to fill the seat of Catherine Gao from the expired term of Catherine Gao. And that would be September 25, 2015, and this part would be September 24, 2021. When I call your name, I'd like to ask you each individual to please state your name for the record. If you are in support or not in support of the test of the appointment or the bill, then you can proceed and where you're from. So with that being said, on the list that I have for me is... Okay. Can everybody hear me? Do you guys have any problems?
Madam Speaker, I'm broken up. I'm broken up. If you can have MIS make sure they test your system.
It's breaking up on my part, too.
Now, hold on. Can you come and fix this right now? No. Hold on a second. Can we bring the...
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Can you...
Yes, a lot better.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, on the first item on the agenda, Mr. Robert C. Titelnoff to serve as a member of the Civil Service Commission. At this time, I will identify Mr. Daniel Leon Guerrero to present his testimony. Daniel Leon Guerrero for the confirmation of Mr. Robert Titelnoff. Colleagues, I'm going to go ahead and proceed with the appointee, Mr. Robert C. Titelnoff. If he could go ahead and read his statement for the record. Mr. Titelnoff? If you can unmute yours. I... colleagues, he is... Thank you. He is on.
Am I on now?
Yes, you are. Please proceed.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Good afternoon, Madam Speaker and Senators. My name is Robert Charclough Titelnoff. They're known as BOM. I am humbled to be here. It is an honor to be before the body. My background includes both military and civilian experiences. I was in the United States Air Force as a supervisor for numerous personnel under my leadership. Have submitted award citations and justified promotions that were truly earned. Have supporting merit nominations and character references for personnel in the United States Air Force organization. After serving in the United States Air Force, I was employed with MCI, which is now Verizon. During my civic years, I was involved with the Marianas Lion Club District 204 and participated with fundraisers such as the White Kane Drive. That scaled during the month of October. That is to raise funds for schools, children's eyeglasses. My continued civic duty also involved assisting veterans with national background checks, which earned their placement in the Department of Defense workforce with NCTS, telecommunications. I am grateful for this opportunity to continue in the civic duties with the commission and help me ask for your favorable confirmation of my appointment to the Civil Service Board. Just want to keep it sweet here. Short and sweet. Any questions? I am open for questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Titelnoff. Colleagues, I want to note for the record, I do not see Mr. Leon Guerrero. Daniel Leon Guerrero... For the record, Mr. Daniel Leon Guerrero has presented testimony in support of Mr. Robert Titelnoff. And we also have a letter of... affirmative for Mr. Titelnoff from a Mr. Juan K. Calvo in support of Mr. Titelnoff's confirmation. So at this time... Is Mr. Calvo available? I don't see him on right now, but I would like to note that for the record and append both testimonies in support of to the record. And at this time, I will open up for any questions to my colleagues. I've asked that my vice chair, do you have any comments or questions for Mr. Titelnoff? Please unmute.
Yes, I'll dispense it to you. I've got a couple laptops here, so I was trying to get myself coordinated. Is the... if I might just ask, with the documents available, was his nomination application made it available for us to review?
Yes, it was.
Okay. I'm still, sorry, learning this process, so I will defer and let others go ahead and ask first.
Thank you. Vice Speaker, do you have any comments or questions for Mr. Titelnoff?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Mr. Titelnoff, first of all, I'd like to thank you for you being willing to serve in this capacity. Just a question. What are some of your goals or visions while you will be serving as a part of this committee or this commission? We have to unmute.
Unmute.
Thank you, sir.
More of my public service. You know, I did some public service with the Lions Club District 204. And right now, I'm taking a break with them, from them. And I wouldn't mind serving the public again.
Okay, thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Titelnoff.
Thank you.
Sido Smasi, Vice Speaker. Legislative Secretary.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you very much, Mr. Titelnoff, for being here today and for answering the call to service. We definitely appreciate it. I'm just reviewing your packet, which was made available to me just a few minutes ago. And I see that your career has been in tech and communications. And if I understand this correctly, you've been retired since 2018, sir?
That's correct, ma'am.
Okay. And so I just would like to ask for the record if you foresee any conflicts that you may have in serving on the Civil Service Commission?
I doubt it. I'm pretty fair amongst people and, you know, making a decision, a good decision has to... has to support any individual that wants support.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Titelnoff. That's what I like to hear, that you'll be fair in the work that you do. So sido smasi. That's off for me, Madam Speaker.
Thank you for your time.
Senator Jean Lee.
Buenos dias, Madam Speaker, and thank you all for joining us. Mr. Titelnoff, I also want to thank you for answering the call and for accepting the governor and the lieutenant governor's nomination of you to this position. I also wanted to ask questions about any potential conflicts of interest. So to kind of go off of what Senator Shelton was speaking of just a minute ago. In terms of a conflict of interest, should one present itself and you find yourself conflicted out, will you recuse yourself from those proceedings?
I think it would be just right, ma'am, to recuse myself if it's a conflict of interest or something to that matter.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Titelnoff. Senator Shelton also mentioned, and it's in your packet, that you are retired at this time. A lot of people that I know that are retired are much busier than they were when they were working full-time because they have a lot of other commitments that they've agreed to do. So I just want to be clear. This board does take up quite a bit of time and reviewing some of these things that come before the CSC. It requires a lot of reading and really spooling up on what their process is. So I wanted to ask you, a lot of our boards and commissions have sometimes difficulty meeting quorum. They have difficulty with people truly participating in the process. So I want to ensure that you're going to be an active member of this board and that you're going to come prepared to all of these meetings. So I wanted to ask you, do you have the time to truly commit to this board, to being prepared for all of the meetings and really kind of diving into the work that they have to do?
Yes, I'm prepared to work out and work this out. As of now, I'm just doing house projects and I'm pretty sure I've got the time. So I'm okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Titelnoff. Please stay safe. And I also want to thank you for your prior service in the military, but also service to the people of Guam and look forward to seeing you continue to serve in this capacity. Sido smasi, and thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you.
You're very welcome, Senator Lee. Senator Joe Sinagusti, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Mr. Titelnoff, how are you doing today? How are you doing today?
I'm fine, thank you, sir. Other than going through this confirmation hearing, I'm okay.
All right. Well, you know, I'd like to also thank you for accepting the appointment. And I look forward to working with you. I mean, I like your last name. I like your middle name. Your last name's a Titelnoff, and I'm a Titelnoff. And your middle name's a Charclough. My wife's last middle name, or last name is Charclough. So I think we can work it out. And I've looked over your record. You were in the Air Force. You were in the Air Force, sir, and I don't blame you for that. I'm retired Army, but I understand. There's always a blue suit in the house. And, you know, sir, I noticed you working for... Was that Verizon?
That's correct, sir.
Yep, and you also work for MCI.
That's correct.
All right, okay.
It was formerly, when it first started out, it was RCA, then MCI WorldCom, MCI. And then I guess Verizon bought the company. So I guess Charclough and Titelnoff.
It worked this way, right? All right, sir. I look forward to working with you as you're working with the civil service because there are going to be some issues that I will be communicating with Mr. Leon Guerrero and all the board members. Thank you, sir, for your accepting that appointment.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sido smasi. Senator Therese Terlahi, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, Mr. Titelnoff. Thank you again for being willing to accept this position. If you don't mind, I'm just going to ask you a few questions about... So the civil service is one of our more... The work, I think, is the most complex of the government boards. It's actually a tribunal. You're actually going to be making decisions on their cases. And you're going to have people appearing for you, presenting for or against, you know, a certain employee's case. And so it's sometimes uncomfortable, I think. But the rules are very complex. So, you know, they almost always hinge on the interpretation of the government of Guam rules. And so I just want to know from you. You know, I'd like to be sure that our commissioners are going to read the rules themselves, interpret it for themselves. Of course, you will have counsel and you will get their advice. But we don't want them to be overly reliant on counsel, you know, when you... It's your... you are going to be the one to make the decision. And do you feel up to that, you know, doing that kind of homework to read the rules and make sure that you're up to speed on the issues that are relevant in that one hearing?
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
All right. And then the Civil Service Commission is also one of the commissions that spends the most hours. Like, for example, I followed one case and that hearing went on for days. And they spent about seven to eight hours per day in that, for the one person's case that went for at least three, maybe five days. And so I just want... That's the kind of amount... That's the amount of time and commitment that they're asking for. And so you're able to put in that kind of time?
I believe so. I can and I will. And like I said, I'm totally retired. The only thing I do at the House is house projects and stuff. This should be an interesting thing.
All right. Well, we're looking at cases that, you know, the employee, sometimes it's termination. So these are very... What's at stake is really big. And so then, and they're adversarial because it's management versus an employee, right? And so the process was all put in place to kind of give a protection to employees. But they're adversarial proceedings, I would say. And are... So sometimes the appointees are put into a position where, you know, you've got a Guam director who's been appointed by the governor going against an employee. And you're also an appointee of the governor. And I want to know, do you feel, you know, like you could be objective and not let, you know, your relationships with these managers or these directors influence your decisions in the case?
Negative. I don't think it'll be influencing with me. I will do my best and fair to the employee that we, you know... I mean, that's what the Civil Service Commission is all about, is to uphold the grievances and, you know, go by the law, actually. And you have to go by legal counsel also.
All right, all right. Well, thank you again. Thanks for committing to that amount of time and that amount of work. I very much appreciate it, Mr. Titelnoff. Sido smasi, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so very much, Senator Therese Terlahi. I also will ask Senator Pito Terlahi, do you have any comments or questions for Mr. Titelnoff?
Robert, are you familiar with the rubber rules of, you know, personal rubber rules?
Negative, sir. You're coming in cannots. Lo, can you repeat that question, sir?
You know, we have these rubber rules of, you know, deciding on an administrative process. And are you familiar with that?
Rubber rules or is it rubber stamping?
No, rubber rules.
Uh, no, I'm not familiar with that, sir.
Oh, anyway, I just throw that out because your first name is Robert. So anyway, Robert, I just want to say that usually when, you know, we thank you for taking the challenge and coming forward and volunteering for this kind of difficult position in as far as making your decision to either terminate or, you know, for employees. But sometimes you've got to be humanistic. And then, again, being a commission member, you need to really make your decision based on the rules of ethics.
That's correct.
So I just want to tell you that... Congratulations for taking the challenge. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Pito Terlahi.
Thank you, Senator.
Next on the agenda, Minority Leader, you are recognized.
Sido smasi, Madam Chair. And you know what, Robert?
Yes, ma'am.
Air Force is number one, just to let you... Don't let him, Sinagusti, fool you. Air Force is number one. And you know my dad is retired Air Force, so, you know, viva Air Force. You're in the right line. Yeah, you're in the right line of defense, Air Force.
You're good.
Thank you so much, Robert, for taking the time out and actually of your life to serve on this commission. It's long. It's six years on this commission. It's quite long. So there's a lot to learn before you step in that. And something so important is this. My good colleague, Senator Terlahi, Therese Terlahi, mentioned the importance of it. And sometimes you have to make these really hard decisions. And knowing when to step aside if there is a conflict of interest because, you know, we're a lot of us, a small island. We're all kind of related somehow, so...
Yes.
And I know because you're from an Air Force group that you're going to do the right thing. So I appreciate that. Then, Robert, of all the agencies, you were asked for civil service. Yes. So of all the agencies, you know, civil service, what can you do? What can you contribute to civil service? And if you had an opportunity, do you see any issues currently, right now, in civil service that you would also like to address?
Not at this time, ma'am, not at this time. I would have to get my foot wet. And maybe, you know, if I do identify these discrepancies or big if's, I would bring it up to the attention to higher-ups or down to you guys, the legislature, for such a change in the process. I know the process is somewhat hectic. And it's very demanding. So I'm willing to... Hello?
Yeah, it's okay. You're kind of breaking up a little bit, Robert. But I think I get the gist of what you're trying to say, and I appreciate it. So my last couple questions would be, have you ever worked for the government of Guam before? I looked at your background. It's mostly in military and private sector. But have you ever really dabbled in government of Guam?
Negative, negative, Senator. That's why I joined the Air Force.
Yeah, viva. Okay, so, well, again, thank you. I share the same sentiments. I appreciate you stepping up to the plate. It is a very difficult area. Besides, you know, parole board, civil service is very difficult. And it does require a lot of good insight, reading, understanding, you know, not only on the government side but on the person with a grievance as well. And to be fair all around because that's what I'm expecting of you, is to be fair, you know, all around.
Correct.
Thank you so much, Robert. Take care. Sido smasi.
You too. Thank you, ma'am, for your time.
Thank you, Minority Leader. Senator Mary Torres, you are recognized.
Hi, I don't have any questions. I just wanted to express my appreciation to Mr. Titelnoff for agreeing to serve. CSC is one of the most challenging positions as a board member because of the merit protection system and the fact that you're willing to undertake that on behalf of the employees and in the interest of being fair and thorough is admirable. So I just want to say sido smasi, and you have my support, Mr. Titelnoff.
Thank you. Thank you for your time, ma'am.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Senator Will Castro, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Buenos dias, Mr....
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Off today, Mr. uh Mr. Titanal. Congratulations on accepting uh the appointment by the Governor of Guam to serve as a member of the Civil Service uh Board. Uh, thank you also for your service with Alliance Club International. And I can tell you, Joe San Augustine's time is impeccable because he's trying to distract me from telling you, I don't know about the Army or the Air Force, but my dad is a service-disabled Navy veteran and a and a radio man at that. But anyway, Viva Armed Services. I do wanna say, oh, that um uh having friends who served on the commission and having been in government, uh, it's gonna be a very difficult task uh to balance both um the conflicts associated with employment uh and balancing the mission of the agency and looking at the ethical considerations surrounding each of the complaints. And so I'm sure we're gonna be there to encourage and pray for you so you can make the best decision possible on behalf of the people of Guam. It's definitely, as my colleagues have pointed out, gonna require a lot more material uh reading, going through that material, a lot more time probably, sir, than uh you put in the Lions Club and that you're accustomed to. But I do appreciate you accepting the appointment. Uh, I trust that your NCO training, as as reflected in your resume, uh, as well as your secret clearance, will serve you well in handling this material discreetly uh and in the best way possible. And so as far as um your confirmation is concerned, uh, Mr. Titanal, thank you for accepting, and you have my vote of confidence. God bless you and your new capacity.
Thank you, sir, for your uh confidence.
Thank you very much, Senator Castro. Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Titanal, for truly stepping up to the plate uh to share um uh with the people of Guam, your time to be an appointee of the Civil Service Commission. And for the record, I want to note that the Executive Director, Mr. Daniel Leon Guerrero, uh, sent his apology uh his apologies to our office, saying that he had some uh issues that he had to take care of right away. He had every intention of being here. He sent in a two-page uh letter accepting um and sharing his uh support for uh Mr. Titanal. And he also noted about his background. So I want to say that again, for the record, Mr. uh Da- uh Daniel D. Leon Guerrero, Executive Director of the Civil Service Commission, extends his letter of support, which will be appended to the committee report uh in today's public hearing. Also, on that note, uh, Mr. Juan K. K. Cavell has also um extended and submitted his uh written testimony in support of uh Mr. Titanal and sense his regrets for not being able to make it, but ensures that Mr. Titanal will uh be a great candidate to fill this appointment. I personally wanna say, Mr. Titanal, I've known you for, you've known me for many years. And I just wanna say that as I was looking over your your resume, your your bio and uh here seeing and looking at your DD two fourteen, but more importantly, your top-secret clearance. Uh, and I know that the your your efforts in in telecommunications, but more importantly, in communications itself and and working many years in the military, but also working with the private sector. I think you you have that uh fair uh perspective. And before I close uh with the support, I have to yield to my uh to my Vice Chair, Senator Mars Titanal, who does have a question uh for you, Mr. Titanal, at this time. So I will go ahead and yield, Senator Mars Titanal, you are recognized for Mr. Robert Titanal's uh for questioning.
Sido Masim, Madam Speaker and Madam Chair. So it's been very good to uh read through your nomination packet and to hear your answers to everyone about your being up to the challenge of the complexity, the si- significant amounts of time that are going to be required. Uh, that's all very important to hear and the due diligence of being fair. Um, as they said, they are gonna be difficult decisions. And so um we really need people who are committed in that way. So when reading through your packet and and based on some of the different questions and answers, just getting a little bit more detailed as to the background that you're bringing. So it is largely in communications. It has been in some other fields. Were any of these related to management or these sorts of decisions in the past? Um, having to deal with maybe company policy development? Um, is there anything in in your past that's going to to help you navigate this this commission going forward?
I guess, yes, I can uh rely on my uh non-commissioned officer leadership school. And that will, that entails a lot of management skills. If somebody or or has a problem and to guide them to the proper agencies. And if we do have a problem, I go to go up towards the uh 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 chain of command as far as for management and 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 question it, you know. But serving for the CSC, like you say, it's gonna be uh uh demanding, but I will be fair. Management-wise also, I was a facility uh management manager for the company. Uh, back then, I was a non-commissioned officer in charge of job control back then. And that for tele- telecommunications. And that was up at the twenty-seventh Communication Squadron at the time. And uh what we did was manage the priorities, far as for parts for planes and you uh bring problem areas to our daily briefing with the uh unit commanders. So I'm pretty, I've I've attended some classes also on management.
Sido Masim for providing that additional detail. It helps me understand your background a little bit more and some of the nuances of what you offer. Uh, along with my colleagues, I thank you for accepting or being willing to be part of this commission and all that it demands for the better of our community. Sido Masim, Madam Chair.
Thank you for your time, ma'am.
Thank you, uh, Vice Chair, uh, Titanal. With that being said, again, Mr. Titanal, knowing your background, uh, looking at your background and looking at the leadership classes, but more importantly, seeing that you do have top-secret clearance and seeing the work that you've done and you continue to work through the private sector for many years, but more or less being retired and wanting to continue to give your time to the community is uh an appreciation that uh, you know, is going to be good for our island as it relates to your your fairness and as it relates to the cases that you will have to be dealing. There's gonna be a lot of reading. There's gonna be a lot of literally taking the time to look at the situation beforehand and making uh those honest decisions. And I know that with the leadership training, with the communications training, and then, of course, uh, what you've gone through, I think you you do have the uh requisites uh needed to uh to do this uh appointment. And I wanna say I congratulate you for stepping up to the plate. I thank you for that. And also to say to my colleagues, I will give you my vote um in the upcoming um session. Uh, we do hope that that would be, that the reports will be expedited and that we will have you on the session agenda. So, Mr. Titanal, I want to say uh thank you again for your time and Sido Sanvini Dicil. Uh, with that being said, uh, I um, uh, Mr. Titanal's confirmation hearing has been publicly heard. Those again wishing to um send written testimony, uh, the window of opportunity is still open. You could send it to speaker@guamlegislature.org or uh uh send it uh by the local address at one sixty-three Chalan Sanso Papa, uh, Agane Guam nine six nine uh one zero. With that being said, thank you very much, Mr. Titanal. Have a good week. Sido Masim.
Thank you very much, Speaker and fellow uh senators. Thank you for your time. I am very humble. And I'm pretty sure we'll be seeing you guys again. Thank you.
Thank you. You can go, Mr. Titanal. Thank you very much. Um, colleagues and those uh who are listening, the next bill on the agenda is Bill number two five five dash thirty-five. COR is introduced by Jose Pito Turlahi and Tina Rose Munia Barnes, which is an actary bill and reenact section four three oh one A and section four three oh two C two. Both article, both of Article Three, Chapter Four, Title Four, Guam Code Annotated, to allow choice for subscribers that participate in the government of Guam health insurance contract. We do have a number of participants who want to present testimony for or against. And I will share uh with you uh that we also have the Director of the Department of Administration, who will um uh give testimony. He has with him brought Mr. Michael Shinet, uh, who will probably also be testifying. I will go ahead and start with them um in a bit. I also wanna note uh for the record that Mr. Frank Campillo, Mr. Ziberben, Ms. Yvette McDonald, Mr. Joseph Cameron, Ms. Julian Martinez, Mayor Rudy Metternani, Josephine Borha, Gabriela Baltista, and I understand Mr. Ken Leon Guerrero, uh, either want to uh present um oral testimony as they as they present via this zoo or send in uh written testimony. So with that being said, before I have the Director of Administration start, I'd like to ask uh the author of the bill, Senator P- uh Jose Pito Turlahi, to please give his opening statement or his brief presentation.
Good afternoon, Madam Speaker, Barnes, uh, Madam Speaker. My distinguished colleague and industry expert and you, the general public. Thank you for your participation in our democratic process. Bill two five five was introduced in response to the current health insurance contract and the inability for our employees, dependents, and retirees, the opportunity to choose the preferred insurance provider. I fully understand that the move to a single carrier was meant to save the government of Guam money and its mandate to ensure their employees, dependents, and retirees with best medical insurance they can reasonably afford at what cost. During the transition period, communication of us and possibly a lack of cooperation between the groups of insurers that provided the government insurance contract for the previous year and the next, the new carrier left a lot to be desired. There has been arguments that made on both sides as to why the transition between the group wasn't as smooth as we would like to have hoped for, but the clear loser was the subscribers. Feeling uninsured procedures and pres- prescription would be filled or authorization that were commonplace in the past became difficult and hard for the subscriber to understand. To his credit, the current insurance has rectified most of his issues and complaints seem to be on the decline. The true issue we are here today to discuss is whether the government's, the government's saving is worth the anxiety, disappointment with services and a feeling of uncertainty for us subscribers. There may also be a word where the government contribution would remain fixed and subscribers could pay additional premiums to have access of their preferred carrier. With that being said, I thank the Speaker who coincident- coincidentally co-sponsored this bill with me to provide a choice to our subscribers in health insurance carrier with the, they like to choose. I thank the industry expert, my colleagues, and all of the, all you gathered and to provide input on this important issue. And I just wanted to mention some of the things that I made some research uh that was placed uh as a discussion in the past. The Office of Public Accountability in twenty eighteen reports it. Our analysis showed that eighty-four percent of our subscribers per year did not choose the lowest-cost carrier options. If an exclusive contract option is selected for fiscal year twenty nineteen, the change may have been disruptive to employees who are used to going to a particular service provider that may not be within the network of a single carrier and thus be very costly to the employees in the long run. So based on this impartial analysis, this single option is costing employees more. Can we quantify how much additional money this has caused employees? According to a study by the National Institute of Health, change of health insurance caused patients to delay seeking care, specifically that it caused patients to forego follow-up care after an emergency room visit for up to four months longer than those who did not have to change insurance. This resulted in a negative medical outcomes, including death. Because Enna is a new carrier for Governor Guam, hundred percent of the Governor Guam employees had to change health insurance. Should we take this negative medical outcome in consideration when choosing a health insurance? That's a question for me. Title five GCA, chapter five, section five zero zero eight lays out as a policy of the Governor Guam that there is policy in favor of local procurement, including preference for companies doing substantial portion of his business on Guam. And we advocate in many other realms of procurement to buy local and circulate tax dollars in local businesses that recirculate that money into our economy. If you study the additional positive economic impact of choosing a local health insurance provided, that's what economic multiplier it has on our economy. And I ask this question, is there a way to keep the cost to taxpayers the same while allowing in uh employees' choice in health insurance? Can employees pay the additional choice if they choose? Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Masim, Sido Masim, Senator Turlahi, thank you uh for your opening statement. And I just want to share also uh uh the, that the Bureau of Budget and Management Research did turn in the fiscal um report. And it was noted uh for the record that uh based on on the proposal of the bill, um, the proposed legislation intends to allow subscribers of the government health insurance to two options in terms of providers by amending pertinent sections of the Guam Code Annotated. Section one of the proposal, proposed legislation amends section four three oh one A and Article Three, Chapter Four, Title Four GCA, relative to the insurance companies uh the governor may enter into contracts with by replacing one or more with the top two. Further, section one also repeals the provision of the subsection that emphasizes securing the most economical and beneficial healthcare insurance proposal plan. Section two of the proposed legislation intends to amend uh section four three oh two C nine of Article Three, Chapter Four, Title Four GCA. However, the Bureau notes that the legislation incorrectly reflects such intent by citing section four three oh two C two. The intended amendment to section four three oh two C nine in section two of the proposed legislation states that the negotiating team shall present the best two proposals and based on the most economical and beneficial healthcare insurance proposal to the governor for consideration and to the legislature for final approval. The section also repeals the provisions that defines the most economical and beneficial healthcare insurance proposal plan as the lowest-cost option of either the exclusive or non-exclusive proposal. Finally, it repeals the provision requiring the only, that only the single most economical and beneficial healthcare insurance proposal plan be forwarded to the governor. According to DOA, due to the fact that the medical costs and cost inflations and generally are projected by medical providers and that health insurance carriers use medical cost data to determine estimated health insurance premiums, it is not possible to determine the exact fiscal impact of having two or more carriers bidding for the government of Guam health insurance contracts as compared to an exclusive bid. However, per DOAs, based on the exclusive and the non-exclusive bids received by health insurance negotiating committees for the fiscal year twenty twenty, health insurance contract, the non-exclusive bids were ten to eleven percent higher than the exclusive bids, possibly due to the risk of uncertainty as to the number of subscribers that will as to the number of subscribers that will choose one plan over the other. I just wanted to present that to the record. So thank you very much for the participants who will be on. I will go ahead and start with Department of Administration's Administrator, Mr. Edward, and then followed by Mr. Shinet for any further comments.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker and Senators, my name is Edward Byrne, Director of the Department of Administration. D O A is responsible for the procurement of the Gov Guam health insurance contract annually. This is the largest single purchase made by the government. Issues similar to the one which is the subject of Bill two fifty-five thirty-five had been raised previously and addressed by two of my predecessors. In 2012, the then Director Benita Manglonia wrote a letter opposing Bill four thirty-five thirty-one, which would have required D O A to negotiate with all bidders who submitted a qualifying proposal. She indicated that it would be more costly to negotiate and administer more than one carrier. In 2017, Director Christine Biletto testified against the concept of the most economical proposal being accepted by the negotiating committee for the health insurance contract. Nevertheless, the legislature did not agree, and the bill became law, and that is where we now stand. I cannot think of any other procurement by Gov Guam which permits a choice in supplier for any one individual purchase. It may be said that health insurance is different, and that view may have some validity. That is what we should now consider. Firstly, it is clear to me that a single most economical bid does identify the lowest cost for the service. That was apparent from the results of the negotiation for fiscal 2020. And Madam Speaker, you just made reference to that in the fiscal note that you read out. Lowest cost means the lowest cost for both the government and the subscriber. All of us are aware of the ever-increasing cost of healthcare. How else can these increases be contained unless there is price competition? Secondly, if there are different deficiencies in the performance of a successfully bidding carrier, the remedy is not to introduce another carrier which may offer a benefit which satisfies one subscriber, but another benefit which falls short of subscribers' expectations. The remedy is to make sure that the operating carrier's product offering and the customer service reaches the level promised in their bid. D O A encourages all Gov Guam employees to contact the carrier, the H R benefits department, or the medical provider who, within the guidelines set by HIPAA, will make certain that the carrier deals with concern both efficiently and equitably. Thirdly, the insurance carrier is not the medical provider. It is the provider who recommends treatment, and they should be skilled in framing that recommendation so that the insurance medical reviewer can understand and therefore approve the provider's treatment plan. That would be true whether we have one or multiple providers. I can tell you from my own experiences before I joined Gov Guam that the interface is critical for the provision and continuation of proper and timely medical care. Very often, it is the carrier who has to coordinate benefits as providers unless they operate a health maintenance model, do not have that capability. The fourth consideration is the difficulty of negotiating a multiple-response solicitation. The Health Insurance Negotiating Committee takes its responsibilities very seriously. It works hard and diligently to make the best recommendation to the governor. To make that task more complex and therefore less definitive is not in the best interest of the government and its employees. We have not yet completed one year with a single carrier, so we should not rush to a conclusion based on incomplete information. It will be pointed out that large governments can offer a menu of choice of carriers, and Gov Guam should do the same. I would like to point out that these choices are generally for different plans with differing benefits. Carriers do not generally bid for or offer competing proposals for the same plan. Senators, as you know, we are well into the process for selecting a carrier for fiscal 2021. The date for bid submissions was last week. I respectfully ask that you respect the procurement process and do not ask me questions, the answers to which would take that process and lead to protests. I also ask that you do not agree to legislative intervention which could delay the committee's work and compress the enrollment timeline as we experienced last year and as Senator Terlahi kind of made reference to. The confusion at the beginning of the year was in no small part due to the compressed timeline with all the concurrent possibilities for errors and omissions requiring post-enrollment correction. You should not be persuaded that two proposals on acceptance will lead to lower costs. There is no evidence to support this theory. It goes against all available evidence and above all is simply counterintuitive. And Madam Speaker, as you mentioned, the proposals for a non-exclusive non-exclusive policy came in and it was about eleven percent higher than the exclusive proposals in respect of fiscal 2020. One single result must always return the lowest cost. It eliminates the uncertainty of the level of participation. How many subscribers will choose which carrier? Uncertainty leads to risk, and risks lead to bid pricing contingencies to offset the financial loss due to that risk. All of us share the goal of achieving a high level of medical care at a reasonable, sustainable, and explainable cost. It is my advice, however, that legislation crafted only eight months into a health insurance contract is not the best way to achieve a commercial purpose. We have heard and responded to the complaints which were voiced at the beginning of the current contract. They were acted on and anomalous corrected. Legislation cannot perfect a commercial negotiation. It should be used as a framework, not a condition. Madam Speaker, Senators, thank you for this opportunity to recall D O A comments on Bill two fifty-five thirty-five.
Thank you very much, Director Byrne, and I do understand that you will be sending your written testimony in shortly. I truly appreciate it. Mr. Shinet, would you like to add anything to that or you're just waiting for questions? Mike Shinet.
He'll respond to any questions, Madam Speaker.
I'll respond. All right, Madam Speaker, I will respond to any questions.
Yes, and if you may, if you can just, for all those that will be providing Zoom testimonies, state for the record where you come from and if you're for or against the measure. With that being said, I will let and entertain Mr. Frank Campillo.
Thank you, Speaker. Buenas and half a day. Senators, thank you very much and for the opportunity to have this new way of providing testimony. Speaker and members of the committee, we sent the testimony to the Speaker's office earlier. I'd like to read our testimony. Dear Speaker Barnes and members of the committee, thank you for the opportunity to testify on Bill two five five thirty-five. We would like to start our testimony by thanking the first responders, frontliners, and medical workers for their job and commitment to our island during this COVID-19 crisis. They've done an incredible job. We also like to thank you, Speaker and Senator Jose Pito Terlahi, for introducing this bill and for listening to the thousands of Gov Guam employees and retirees who are seeking choices of health insurance providers. We support Bill two fifty-five dash thirty-five for several reasons which we outline below. It allows the government of Guam employees and retirees to choose a health insurance provider that they feel would better serve their needs. And if I can interrupt a little bit, I hear the Director of Administration and for all due respect, Director, one of the parts and differences between this contract and most contracts with the government of Guam is that the actual employee and member participates in part of the premium, so they also should be allowed to have choices. The government of Guam and retirees contribute to the overall premium payments for their health insurance, and they should be given the opportunity and allow the choice to choose health insurance providers. Most states governments allow their employees to choose options of health insurance providers. The federal government, which runs the largest employer-sponsored health plan, allows choices of health insurance providers for their employees and annuitants. Even Medicare, believe it or not, even Medicare, the largest government-sponsored and taxpayer-funded health insurance system in the world, provides options of plans to their beneficiaries. Thousands of Gov Guam employees and retirees have signed petitions, called Senator's office, and other electoral officials to seek options of health insurance providers. Many doctors and other medical providers had voiced their preference for health insurance options as well. The Mayor's Council of Guam passed a resolution in support of choice on behalf of the government of Guam constituency. And if there is anyone that feels what is going on in the community, I believe, are the mayor's councils because they are right there in the community. The Pharmacy Association has issued a letter supporting choice of providers for Gov Guam employees and retirees. The American Medical Clinic with Dr. Nguyen and other medical providers have expressed support for this legislature as well. Hundreds of Gov Guam employees and retirees have signed a petition supporting choices of health insurance providers. We understand the concerns that Gov Guam may have for changes in premiums, and this can be addressed by applying several options so that the government of Guam budget is not impacted if premiums are different. Gov Guam may set up maximum premium contribution per class of enrollment. The government of Guam may leave its contributions as currently they are for the 2020 fiscal year. To balance any possible premium increases, Gov Guam may use or put together a premium adjustment that allows for inflation factors to help retirees and employees. Gov Guam has already controlled premiums by mandating carriers to meet medical loss ratios and return premiums if the medical loss ratios are lower. The above protects the government of Guam against premiums variations. Employees and retirees are given a choice, and they will also make up any premium differentials. In fact, as we go through this crisis and this pandemic, and as crazy as it may sound, and without saying that I support that type of action, as you can see, some of the things that are going on in some of the states is that people want choices, the choices not to necessarily stay home. And I'm not necessarily saying I support that, but it's something that you have seen going on right now in some of the states. Gov Guam could implement other strategies to help contain premium increases, and that's something that I suggest the Director of Administration and others in Gov Guam could possibly do. For instance, North Carolina has shifted its health plan for state employees and teachers to a reference price model that ties payments for healthcare services to the Medicare rates. Of course, any changes in models must be duly evaluated and reviewed and get the stakeholders involved in such changes. In closing, we support this legislation, and we urge you and the committee members to pass it. The thousands of government of Guam individual members who have contacted you, the senators, the mayors, and our office will be grateful for your decision. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and thank you for the opportunity to testify.
See you as Masi, Mr. Frank Campillo. Next on the sign-up sheet, I have Mr. Richard Zimmerman.
Mr. Zimmerman? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you, Madam Speaker and distinguished senators. Let me say, first of all, I'm new to this type of procedure, so please bear with me if I stumble a bit. And my testimony does not directly address the question of choice. So I did submit it in writing last week. I'm not sure if I should read it now because, as I say, read it?
Yes, please. Yes, please read it.
Even though it doesn't directly address the question of choice?
Yes, please go ahead and read your testimony.
Okay, thank you. I speak as a government of Guam retiree, a retiree from U G. I believe I also speak on behalf of other retirees who, like myself, remain Guam residents but spend substantial chunks of time away from both Guam and the U S mainland. In my case, I spend several months a year in Thailand. Before the current fiscal year, I had, along with Medicare Parts A and B, Select Care's Retiree Supplemental Plan. This combination covered me well on Guam and in the U S mainland. In 2017, for example, I had a major procedure at the University of Kansas Medical Center, and the dual insurance coverage was very good, and it was very welcome. The problem comes when I am away from both Guam and U S soil and not covered by Medicare. In that case, the R S P provider takes over as the primary insurer, but this worked only within Select Care's limited East Asian network. It gave me no coverage in Thailand, for example, nor would it help if I traveled further afield to Europe, for example. I made it through the following year, the, I guess it's fiscal 2019, with my fingers crossed, but decided that for the following year, I had better revert to Select Care's fifteen hundred plan. In other words, for this current year. This in principle would give me decent coverage in Thailand and throughout the world, not total coverage, but I think acceptable coverage. The problem with the fifteen hundred plan is, number one, it requires paying a premium. The R S P has zero-dollar premium for medical, only a small premium for dental. Number two, it requires paying a deductible. The R S P has no deductible. Number three, and this is one that I think is a little strange. As an R S P subscriber, I have the very good fortune of receiving reimbursement from the Government of Guam Retirement Fund for my Medicare Part B premium, which currently is about $200 a month. However, this would not be the case if I elected the fifteen hundred plan. The Guam budget law states that this reimbursement, quote, "shall only be made to those who opt for the Retiree Supplemental Plan," unquote. I don't know the reason for this stipulation and cannot think of any logical one, but that appears to be the law. Speaking frankly, I suppose I could live with, one, the first, number one and number two of those above, although it would cost me. But if we add on number three about the absence of the reimbursement, the cost differential becomes exorbitant. Roughly speaking, depending on the particulars, I calculate that it could cost me $5,000 or more before receiving any benefits, and copays for out-of-network expenses would be on top of that. But I don't think I would have any choice. Then along came Etna International with its global network. This was extremely welcome. I learned during open enrollment last September that with Etna's R S P, I would have coverage, for example, at the best hospitals in Thailand. I enrolled immediately. Of course, off-island coverage is not a hundred percent, and it generally requires advanced authorization. But there is no doubt in my mind that I am enormously better off than before. And I think this would be true of some other retirees as well. Now, apparently, there have been problems with Etna. I don't know the exact nature of these problems. So far, my own experience with Etna is confined to more or less routine procedures on Guam with Medicare as my primary coverage and Etna as the secondary. So far, I have not had any problems, although one has just recently arisen. I need to see a dermatologist, and the new dermatologist on Guam, Dr. Yang, does not have a contract with Etna. This was as of March when I first wrote this. I have not checked again. With luck, this may be a temporary glitch resulting from both Dr. Yang's and Etna's newness to Guam, and it will be resolved in the near future. For bigger problems, one can only hope that they will work themselves out as Etna. as Aetna learns to adapt to Guam's uniqueness. My point is simply that, for the sake of people like myself, Aetna is needed here, and growing pains can be accepted in the larger context. If it turns out that Aetna's RSP is no longer available come September and the next open enrollment, this will be a serious problem for people like me. If that happens, and I re-enroll with Select Care... This is, I'm being a little repetitious here. There is one thing at least that I would hope for, a revision of the law referred to above that limits Medicare premium reimbursement to, again, quote, "those who opt for the RSP," unquote. This restriction does not seem to make sense. Enrolling in the 1500 Plan is like enrolling in the RSP plus opting for additional coverage and paying for it. Why should the enrollee be penalized in effect for that? It may well be, I don't know, it may well be that the law was not intended to discriminate against retirees with Medicare coverage who opted for a group plan other than the RSP, but it was simply a matter of wording, i.e., it was just assumed that anyone with Medicare who enrolled in the government of Guam group health insurance program would naturally enroll in the RSP once it became available. I'm speculating here. I hope the points I've made here will be taken into consideration in the coming decision-making process, and I thank you for the opportunity to participate here.
Si, Jose Smas, Mr. Zimmerman, thank you very much. Colleagues, next on the agenda is Ms. Yvette McDonald. You may proceed. Hafedeh, good afternoon.
Hafedeh Speaker, senators, and guests, thank you for your time. I am for the bill. My name is Yvette Nicole McDonald, a patient with multiple and chronic medical issues. As a new member of Aetna, I have had to face many challenges, hurdles, stress, frustration repeatedly. I try my best to be optimistic and to listen, understand, communicate, and do my part to affect things on my end. However, almost always, it seems like I continue to hit a brick wall without any resolutions. I try to be patient and understanding, knowing that with every change, we have to allow time. But with each passing time, it seems like things just getting worse for me. I had issues from day one since Aetna took over as government of Guam's insurance company. I have never experienced such hurdles, frustrations, lack of communication, and misinformation from an insurance company in my life. For one, I am appalled as to how long it takes to get an approval or LOA from Aetna. I have medical issues, and I know how the medical referral system works. As I have gone through this process for over a decade already, and I have never received such poor and disconnected treatment from any other insurance company through medical referral or on island. I tried to be patient and understanding through the transition, and I understand that everyone was just learning and trying to adapt to the changes. But the beginning, at the early onset, customer service was ignored. I called from, I called the Guam Aetna office daily. I left messages on voicemails, and I personally, through representatives, but did not receive any return calls until two weeks later. When the call is returned, at least two weeks later, still, no information and no resolution to any of my issues or questions. I am one to plan well in advance for anything in my life. And my medical issues and off-island treatments are priority for me, so I plan accordingly. At least three months prior to my shots and follow-up to Philippines, I begin to do pre-approval work for myself by contacting all those needed to. I follow up proper protocol, as I always have with other insurance companies, and I call Aetna for guidance, assistance, and processing. However, every single time I have done that, I am giving the same response: No approval received from stateside yet. And proceed to purchasing airline ticket will be reimbursed. This process itself is frustrating and draining financially and emotionally, because I have never had to do this before. Isn't this why we have insurance? As a matter of fact, seeking reimbursement is another story. It's frustrating, troublesome, and a long wait to get reimbursed. I require the Stellara shot every three months, and since Aetna took over, I purchased my airline ticket myself. This has been an ordeal that I need to get adjusted to, because with Select Care, they were paying my airfare for me, they covered my shot, and they even made reservations and purchased my ticket for me. Since day one, Aetna stepping in, I tried repeatedly to speak to the appropriate people that can help me, but it took weeks before I was finally connected to Mr. Frank Areola, the manager. To some extent, Frank was very compassionate and tried to be helpful. But again, the same message is clear without anyone having to speak it. There's nothing much that anyone on Aetna Guam can do for us, because those who really made the decisions are those who are stateside, and those stateside don't seem to have a clear vision of the struggles and challenges we face with Guam since they took over. It seems like we have to jump through hoops and ladders before getting anything done. As my three-month follow-up for the Stellara shot is soon approaching, I contacted Aetna this past week and was informed that my coverage for the shot was denied. I was told that there is possibility that Aetna will bring the Stellara shot to Guam, but they didn't give any other details. If that is the case, then Aetna should have had all their facts in line, especially knowing that some patients, such as myself, are due for the shot. Plan B should have already been in place during this COVID-19 pandemic with travel restrictions already in place. However, no facts were provided to me about my shot. My health dependent, my health is dependent on the Stellara shot because it alleviates my chronic pain and suffering without it. I will be in dire pain and suffering. There are so many things unclear at this time about how I will receive my shot, even when they are already well aware that this is something that is done every three months. And I know I am not the only patient on Guam that gets the same shot every three months. Additionally, I was informed that if I continue to go to Philippines for my shot, I will have to pay 80/20. I am curious to know if Aetna has hired a dermatologist and a rheumatologist doctor in Guam when it comes to, when it comes time to bringing the Stellara shots to Guam, because there are currently none, which is another reason why I have been referred to Philippines. The Stellara shot is not just a shot to take. It requires medical specialists, professionals, professionals, doctors to follow up with the patient receiving the shot. There has been so many issues I have dealt with throughout the last few months with Aetna. It has caused me so much anger, frustration, stress, and anxiety. I am tired of being patient and waiting around for answers. Something has to be done to fix all their issues. With the constant increasing prices of healthcare in our country and with the ever-rising incidence of disease, health insurance today is a necessity. Health insurance exists to provide people with a much-needed financial backup at times of medical emergencies. Health risks and uncertainties are a part of life. One cannot plan to get sick. I didn't plan to get sick. But one can certainly be prepared for the financial aspect by having health insurance. One of the ways to be financially prepared against uncertain health risks is by having health insurance, and to date, I cannot wholeheartedly say that Aetna has provided such service for me. So I am pleading with you, please, find a way, fix all these issues, and give us answers and resolutions instead of giving us more problems to face. Otherwise, allow us the right to choose our own medical insurance. Thank you for your time and understanding.
Si, Jose Smas, si, Jose Smas, Ms. Yvette McDonald, thank you very much for your presentation. At this time, I will now recognize Mr. Joseph Cameron. Joe Cameron, you may proceed. You're unmute, please.
Buenas saludos para todos, Madam Speaker, and Piyotse Senator Pedro Terlaji. I bid you both salutations of good health, and I also express the same for all our other senators who are here. Thank you very much. I, along with my mother, Maria Otero Cameron, and many, and I want to qualify when I say many government of Guam retirees who are in support of Bill Number 255. For many years, I've always attended the Guam Association for Retired Persons with Lola. Remember? Cola? Lola Cola? Well, Lola's my cousin, and she often would pull me out of the house and says, "We're going to a meeting." And I would say to her, "What meeting?" She says, and I wasn't Manamku yet. But nonetheless, as the years went by, maybe eight, nine years, she would say to me, "Did you get smarter?" And I said, "Well, I think so. I hear a lot of crying." If in the event that I die, Joseph, somebody has to speak, because the Manamkus are very mamahlo. They're shy, and they won't come in front of an august body like ours because of the, probably the lack of English or the diction. And so therefore, I want to tell you, I am in a lot of communications still today with the Manamku. I am a retiree out of the office of the Lieutenant Governor, and more so today than any other time. Do we experience the growing demands for government intervention for healthcare? And we know this to be true nationwide. But on Guam, we, the retirees of the government of Guam, we are concerned. We're very concerned with the soaring costs for healthcare. We're very concerned about that. And for health insurance. You know, this is a problem which Guam shares to some extent with most states and territories of the United States, and we know this. Madam Speaker, this problem is further compounded with the growing number of people who are uninsured for healthcare expenses. We hear that Yvette McDonald has mentioned that she thought the state at which a person came in and wanted help, but something has fallen, a burden, has fallen upon them unknowingly. So these two points that I'm making has generated growing political support. And that political support's for broad reforms to solve these problems, Madam Speaker and the senators. And this political pressure is bringing our government of Guam retirees, like myself, my mother, and like I said to you, qualifying that the members of the Guam Association of Retired Persons, it is critical at this point and juncture of our lifestyle that we have choice points. Really. In comparison, we, and I collectively say "we," because I stated this earlier, we clearly do not have a personal choice in the selection of a health insurance company today, as we had enjoyed for many years past. And I will tell you, the Manamkus, when they came in on the last time, they said, "Hey, what happened to my choice?" You know, we can do press releases, we can do public media. When the elders already know that they're happy with what they've got, and then all of a sudden, it's like the rug was pulled from under them. Not that it was intentional, because we followed the laws of the United States. We're a land of laws. A lot of elders don't know about these things. So this unalienable right, the freedom of choice, must be impacted. To select what was taken away from us, I want it back. I'm sorry. The legislature's actions to cease and desist our option to choose amongst interested health insurance providers? Huh? We want back our choice option. I didn't say I didn't want Aetna. Did anyone say I said that? Absolutely not. For all the naysayers out there listening to me, taima mano. Have no shame. Be careful when you're listening to me, because I am not speaking with a double S-word. That has never been my intent. I was never raised that way as a cabeza y ser herero. I'm proud of my heritage. It is a huge responsibility, Madam Speaker and our senators, to place on a few government of Guam employees to do the negotiation as to which single company would eventually be selected to provide healthcare insurance coverages to our many thousands of employees in all three branches of government. Yeah! The executive, the legislated, the judiciary. And I assure you, Madam Speaker, that I come to this august hall having personal knowledge and experience. Of this strenuous responsibility, because you know why? I sat numerous times on the government of Guam annual healthcare negotiation team as a voting member. Madam Speaker, we have a growing number of government of Guam retirees. Honest to God. Who are dissatisfied with their healthcare system, and therefore, we're saying we support Bill 255. We want you to repeal this current law and bring back the structure that allowed us choice once again. We're begging you to please consider that. Political pressure? I heard you say that. Guam is small. We meet each other in the grocery store. You know, this political pressure is growing rapidly. It's growing rapidly to control healthcare costs. And you know what? This is the way I look at it. When you have a choice between one or the other, both of them should come to the point that, you know what? It has to be the lowest cost, and it has to be across the board. Not, you know, "Oh, you are the lowest," because sometimes you have hidden costs. Do you really believe I'm deaf, or do you want me to sign language so that you can understand? And to the extent our employees' choices amongst insurance coverages from more than one provider, that's what we're asking for, Madam Speaker. My dear senators, you know what? Our government had always included by way of allowing smaller insurance carriers to base medical loss ratio rates, and that's not a $10 word, like what the DOA director's been talking about, on past year's data. We must be allowing insurers to bid against each other for contracts to serve our government of Guam employees and, of course, our retirees. Why not? Should there be a provision of resources to allow the active and the retirees to make informed choices? We have no likes or dislikes that we can speak about? And in the past, we have always been included features like essential health benefits to counter adverse selections. You know what that means? That means that if somebody's very sick, that both insurances that are on the same table would not be adversely selected. In other words, they share the costs across the board, because you know why? In other words, they share the costs across the board, because you know why? They exist because of us. You know what? I'm pretty much sure that. And I'm sure this is true. I'm pretty much sure that both Republicans and Democrats, they agree on one priority and that's promoting consumer choice. The line is long. Madam Speaker, the line is very long. We're tired. Don't let this skin that's still elastic fool you. I'm 63 years young. But I have the soul of an old elder, 100 years old. If there's somebody in great pain and they need help right now. Why must we wait in the laps of oceans far away for a yes and no to such great medical needs we have? The substance that they said they would provide is lackluster today. And I'm here to say, that as a former negotiator for the annual government of Guam health insurance negotiation team, I'm here to say, it was always my hope. Do you hear? Because it's not just my hope, it's the hope of everybody that lives on this island and likes informed choice. It has always been my hope and theirs, that competition and consumer choice, Madam Speaker, at many levels, do meet the health insurance and healthcare needs of our government of Guam family. And when choice was made available, at the same time, resulting in affordable insurance. Come on. The affordable insurance premium. It's competition. Come to me. Let's turn the clock of time back, Madam Speaker, please, and my dear senators. I'm asking you, I'm begging you, please. Turn, restore what was used to be the winning proposition for all insurers to our government of Guam families. I ask for myself, I ask for my mother Maria Arturo Cameron, and most especially for our retirees. I may not be speaking for every one of them, but I will tell you, I speak for numerous. More than 10 hands can come up. That's 100. More. We ask you that you would grace us with your wisdom, kind senators, please. Please return to us the right for informed choices. I would like to speak also in the vernacular. For those of you who are not familiar with that $10 word, I'm going to speak in Chamor, because that was the first language. That was my native tongue and I would like to reach out. Senador, senadora, put the boat ma'asi. Na'pan magu'pan talu ma'asi ekku mu' i bos' mami. Na'nan man. Na'piniti. All of our senators that's looking at me right now, you know that God is the way, God is the truth and the life. And I speak the truth. We shouldn't be talking about errors and emissions. We should be talking about service provision. What about our cultural risk? Kalan malafunkshun.
Man pu betsu, Mr. Joseph Cameron, for your passionate testimony. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda to my colleagues. I have Mr. Ken Leon Guerrero. You may proceed. Unmute yourself, please.
Okay. My name is Ken Leon Guerrero. I'm with Guam Citizens for Public Accountability. And what we've got here is a situation that is reminiscent of what took place in 2016 when we learned in a special economics session that the cost of the multi-vendor was $21 million more than the cost of the single vendor healthcare contract. And we also learned in that session that at that time, it was about $67 million, as I recall, and 83% of that was paid for by taxpayers. The majority of whom have no medical or healthcare insurance whatsoever, which was confirmed during hearings on Guam Memorial Hospital, where they were testifying that 75% of their patient load coming through the emergency room had no insurance and that was one of the reasons why GMH was running such a high arrears amount. Then we come to 2018 and we go to the Bill 30 debacle, where a group of senators without the benefit of expertise legislated benefits into the contract that were not vetted by healthcare actuaries and the result was a $10 million increase. So in the space of two years, we went from a $67 million contract to a $90 million contract with 83% of the premium being paid for by taxpayers, the majority of whom have no healthcare insurance. This is a huge problem. And this problem is about to get worse, because now we have a group of senators through Bill 255, which is a bad bill for the government of Guam employees and a bad bill for the taxpayers in Guam, and demonstrates that the members of the 35th legislature have a total lack of understanding of basic business principles and even in a more egregious lack of understanding on how insurance works. Because this bill is pure pandering piece of legislation designed mostly for headline bragging rights in an election year. Now, the reason I say this is when we saw what happened with Bill 30 being passed without any expert testimony and without any actuaries coming in and pointing out the cost differential between Bill 30 and not passing Bill 30, taxpayers ended up getting stuck with another $10 million a cost. And in the process, the government in Guam employees got stuck with a plan that is, I mean, every government in Guam employee I've talked about does not like this plan. And the reason we ended up with this is because the senators legislated away local company competition. And now with Bill 255, it reminds me of an old saying, there is no situation so bad that you can't make it worse if you work hard enough at it. And that's what I see happening here with Bill 255. Because now we have gutted Guam Memorial's financial stream. I mean, in the past couple of reporting sessions, we have seen a substantial shift in patient caseload with insurance moving away from government of Guam, Guam Memorial Hospital to the privately owned Guam Regional Medical Center, leaving taxpayers to come up with additional money to plug the donut hole for Guam Memorial Hospital. This probably would not have happened if Bill 30 had not passed and local insurance companies were allowed to compete based on their insurance, their existing medical care relationships. So the biggest complaint I have with about Bill 255 is you're doing it again. You're sitting here contemplating legislation to change the very architecture around how healthcare benefits work for the largest group of healthcare-covered employees, government of Guam, without doing your due diligence and bringing in healthcare actuaries that will go through the numbers and put before you a case, a series of options about if you do these things, this is going to be the impact. Unless, of course, you're willing to scale back what taxpayers contribute. Because right now taxpayers went from 83% of 67 million to 83% of 90 million. And we didn't, we taxpayers didn't get anything out of that. So if you're going to do, proceed with this choice issue, then you need to lock down what taxpayers are contributing now and then any increase in premium as a result of your actions. And I'll tell you, there will be consequences, because business is a numbers game. You have a large number of clients, you're able to provide more cost-effective services. You're going to take a pie, split it into four choices. Each choice will have a smaller number, therefore the premiums are going to go up. And I'm okay with that. If the cost to taxpayers is the same and any increase in premium as a result of choice is passed on to the people making the choice, then that's a fair deal for the taxpayers. And then the employees will be carrying the burden of the choices they make, not taxpayers, the majority of whom have no insurance coverage. So in conclusion, I would like to remind you that the government of Guam has many real pressing and urgent financial problems. Monkeying around with how you're going to pay insurance premiums is only going to throw another log on a fire that's already burning brightly. You don't need that kind of distraction right now. What you need to do is concentrate on, if you're going to make any further changes to this program, do it the right way and do it based on sound subject matter expertise, not political whims, hoping to cater to the largest group of voters and getting that, look at me headline, I gave you back choice, which is what this bill is. And in the end, you're going to stick it to all the taxpayers, most of whom who don't have any healthcare insurance. And as a result, the diverting more money away from the general fund to supporting the healthcare, any increase in healthcare premiums, we're going to see services suffer across the board. An increase in the largest purchase, the largest contract to government of Guam means less money to go to education, less money to go to public safety, less money to go to public works, less money to go to many other things that are important to those of us who do not have government of Guam healthcare coverage. Thank you.
Okay. Before I start with the question and answer period, I understand there may be a couple of presenters that spoke this morning that might have additional comments. Mr. Campillo, did you have any additional comment to add? I'll give you that.
No, not at the moment. I'll be happy to answer any questions, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, in fairness to one of our elected officials who wanted to be here but couldn't because he had an issue that came up in his village, he'd asked me that I personally read this message for him. It is from the mayor of the village of Jigo, Mayor Rudy Matanani. It says, "Buenos en hapa de, I would like to address this testimony not only on my behalf, but on behalf of the constituents of Jigo who have expressed their concern regarding the matters of insurance options available for those employed with government of Guam. As it stands, Etna Insurance is the only option available. With Etna, there have been many who have come forward to address their complaints regarding the challenging symptomatic process just to attain medical services. A process which at times seems ludicrous just to be seen for basic medical attention. In the past, there have always been an option available for those who seek insurance. Why are we not afforded this choice now? With Etna Insurance, I have had individuals address their hardships of not having the ability to afford the healthcare services they need because the guidelines which Etna requires. With that said, many people have voiced that they have had instances where they were billed by their physicians for services that would otherwise have been covered with the insurance they previously had. It is my belief that when seeking insurance for medical needs, it should be easily accessible with the options for us to choose freely. Not just one sole provider monopolizing the medical needs of the public. People need to be given a choice to healthcare that will seek the best interest for them. Healthcare options that aren't so difficult when needing basic medical attention and option that serves the best interest for them. I would hope that our island leaders will continue to make the best possible decisions when caring for our island and its people." Sinceramente, Mayor Rudy Matanani, Mayor of Jigo. Colleagues, I also had letters of support from Josephine Borja, who sent in her email, could not make it. Also a Gabrielle Bautista in support of Bill 255 and said she apologized she couldn't make it. And we also heard, I mean, we also have written testimony from Isla Pediatrics, signed by Josephine Burrito as the business manager in support of 255-35. Again, the record is open for continued written testimony to be provided to our office. And at this time, I would like to ask the author, before I go down the protocol, Senator Terlaji, do you have any questions for our presenters today? Senator Pito.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Zanu na'introduci si na'na Bill 255 sa'ua esperanza i problema. Sanya i minegai tau tau niya su da'ua giza Filipinas. Ni manha'au wa'tu giza godza lekna put fa bot, Pito, azuda ham. [speaking Spanish]
When Pobetsu, Senator Pito Chalai, at this time, my Vice Chair, Senator Marsh Titano, are you still on? You're recognized. Please unmute.
Sujus Massey, Madam Speaker. So I do have some questions. So first of all, Sujus Massey to everybody for testifying. It's, you know, as we often say, or at least I often say, it's a, it's a complex issue. It's got a lot of facets to it. It has a lot of very significant impacts in a variety of ways. And so it's been really important to hear from everyone. And so some of what's been going through my mind since I've read the bill some time ago and up to now, is trying to understand the negotiating process. And, you know, I've been trying to weigh out how much of the negotiating process is part of this. And part of Mr. Leon Guerrero's testimony reflected some of this, you know, getting the correct information and, and making sure that we're hearing from experts. And so I know we have a variety of people, as Mr. Byrne was mentioning, that are part of this and Mr. Cameron has been part of this negotiating team. So if I could ask Mr. Byrne, I believe he's still here. So if I could ask Mr. Byrne, were there certain criteria in being part of the negotiating team? Or do you see that that led up to this situation where we do have some, some customers who have issues? Or do you see in the process going forward how we might take these issues and have it better inform the negotiating process going forward? Is, is that one of the ways that we could address these issues is through the negotiating process itself to take lessons learned from what has come up as problematic this time around, so that next year it might be a different situation?
Thank you, Senator. Let, let me start by saying, you know, this, this is obviously a very emotive subject. I think we've all heard people have very strong opinions on, on the subject. And, and it's understandable because it reaches to a personal level and deals with people's health and people's well-being. The negotiating committee, and I would, as I would remind everyone, as Mr. Cameron kind of alluded to, is that the retirees do have a representative on the negotiating committee whose job is to put forward the views and the requirements of retirees. That negotiating committee looks at a number of facts. And one of, if you read the current RFP, customer service is one of the factors that is considered when a consideration is made to who will be the carrier for the, for the ensuing year. We ask bidders to provide us with information and statistics on their customer service. And it's one, one of the factors. But obviously, any negotiating team would take notice of what people say. That, that's the whole purpose of having committees, that the representatives on the committee, which beside the retirees, comes from the major GovGuam departments, that, that those representatives obviously bring with them the views of their, and I hate to use the word constituents, to the committee so that a proper decision is made.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, just in thinking all of this through, not making a decision yet, are you saying that we would, the negotiating team would have opportunity to hear from the people who have been served throughout this year? And it would have weight on whether a provider is or is not chosen going forward? When they bring statistics and we're dealing with some of these companies, maybe I'm thinking nationally or internationally, but will there be a way for the local experience, for statistics about that, to really have some weight?
Senator, it's a representative committee. The, the retirees should speak through their representative. The GDOA employees, who are obviously another, another big block, speak through their representative. And then the legislature has, legislature has a representative and other participants all have representatives. And they have the opportunity, these representatives have the opportunity to ask questions of the bidders. And I assure you that these are fairly searching questions and are designed to make sure that bidders produce information. And the statistics, which I talked about, is, it's just one of the factors, but customer service is one of the factors that's taken account of. And, you know, I've heard a lot about the current contract, but there were obviously customer service issues in the previous contract. I don't want to go into the details of who, you know, which, what specific issues there were. But, you know, I, I don't think we should just assume that, that this contract, and I've heard what people are talking about, this contract is the only one to have certain dissatisfied, dissatisfied subscribers, because it's not.
And along the same lines, if, if I may, Madam Speaker, I'm not sure if you're limiting us to one question. I just have one more question at this time.
I will allow that for you, Vice Chair.
Sujus Massey. The other thing that really stood out to me is this term "best." And, you know, on one hand, we want to have the representatives and the experts have flexibility. But do you have any recommendations, perhaps both Mr. Byrne and Mr. Cameron, who have been part of this process for a while, if you have any recommendations? Whether the term "best" would just be left and leave it up to the, the negotiating committee to determine what "best" means? Or if there is any further guidance that you would recommend along with the one word "best"?
Well, "best" is qualitative. So everybody's idea of "best" is different. And that's why you have a committee. And there are 11 people on the committee. Now, it's, it's not like it's a very few papal taking this decision, which I think what, what Mr. Cameron kind of alluded to. The, the law as it currently stands, and the law that was used to determine the winning bidder in the current contract, talks about "best." And I think it's left up to the individual members to determine exactly what "best" means. Because we're weighing all these different factors, like I, like I spoke about before.
So it sounds like your recommendation would be to continue to leave it as "best" and, and allow the 11 representatives to, to weigh it all out amongst themselves?
Yes, it's a complicated decision, Senator. It's, you know, you're not choosing, you're, you're not choosing a car or a, a notebook. And, and you're choosing a whole package of factors. And, you know, whether, whether you can go to this provider or that provider, and what, what the co-pays are and what the deductibles are. It's a much more complex decision. So I honestly feel that, and, and I would say that, like I referred to in my remarks, that the members of this committee take, take their job very, very seriously. And I can, I can assure you that the, the meetings that we have are just as long as this one, looks like it's going to be.
Well, and I, I appreciate that all, also, if it's all right, Madam Speaker, allow Mr. Cameron to answer since I had thrown it out to him as well. But it's important to hear that because when we get on the session floor, if this gets to the session, it's important to hear from committee members itself whether "best" is meeting the needs of the negotiating team. Because we might be tempted on the floor to come up with amendments that would add to it or not. And so if we hear feedback from negotiating team members themselves, that "best" works, then that's important. Mr. Cameron, did you have the same perspective?
It makes sense to have a committee, there's no question about it. But my, my concern is, are we rightsizing who sits on the negotiations table? We could dip a lot of people in the table, but my only concern would be, well, first of all, I would like to FOIA who's on that negotiation table and see their background. That would tell me a lot about how well they can negotiate. And I'm not taking anything away from those folks. I'm just saying that I think we are in a life of transparency and, and we want to be able, nonetheless, you know, people can be shuffled around. I've seen it in the past where, okay, you're going to go to negotiation, you're, you're gonna, you're gonna support us. You need to go there. But I think, I, I don't want to pass a law that says this is the minimum requirement for you to represent the judicial court. But clearly, I think Ken Leon-Garros made a very strong statement, and I support him on that. Do you have strong actuarial experience? That you're sitting down at that table and you're doing, and it's very cumbersome. You know, we're, we're actually going line item by line item by line item. And it takes more than a month. It takes hours. And it takes those employees away from the job that they were hired to do. It's a very difficult task. But I'm just saying that if you have a very strong person guiding this process, somebody who, who has a degree in it, in actuarial work, Ken, I, I, I hear what you're saying. And I remember sitting on that negotiation table where we always did have somebody who was very strong. And we were able to contain those costs down. And it spiraled over the years. And I'm, and Ken, you're right. For some reason or another, it's spiraled. And I think we need to put these companies together and, and try to figure out exactly what we want to do moving forward.
Sujus Massey for both the answers. I'll pass it on, Speaker, and then if there's time at the end, I may have one more question.
Thank you, Vice Chair Marsh Titano. I did know that the Vice Speaker wanted to yield to Secretary Shelton. You are now recognized.
Oh, thank you very much, Speaker. And thank you to everyone who's here to testify today, all of the stakeholders. I appreciate everything that you've presented to us to help give us a, a better picture of what we are dealing with here. Mr. Byrne, if you could maybe share if there were any other issues aside from the cost factor that led to the change to this one company insurance, so, provider? Could you share anything about that?
Yes, Senator. Cost is the biggest weight in the factor. But like I referred to earlier, customer service is one of the other factors. The breadth of the network is another factor. So if you look at the current RFP, it, it actually lists all, all the items because we have to deal with it in that way. It actually lists all the items that are being considered by the committee and, and gives the indication of the weighting.
Okay. Thank you very much. And so, Mr. Byrne, in your professional opinion, do you think that the current makeup of all those who sit on the negotiation team on behalf of the government of Guam is sufficient? Do you feel that there are more requirements that we need? Do we need to establish that? Or do you think that we're doing a good enough job with who we are appointing to these positions?
I would like to, you know, like I did, pay tribute to the people that are on the committee who take it, as I said, their, their duties very seriously and put in a, a lot of work. When I came to the States 34 years ago, and in Des Plaines, Illinois, they, the company that, that was being bought had to have a health insurance contract because it was part of something else and didn't have one before. I thought at the time, this is such a complex and wasteful way of achieving healthcare. But nevertheless, it was needed because that, that is the way that you provide healthcare. You know, basically, the employer provides healthcare. And that's something that's grown up, I think, kind of by accident within the United States because it was kind of treated as, as part of, of compensation. The people that are on the committee represent the, you know, this is a government of Guam policy. So apart from the retirees, different sectors of the government of Guam, including the legislature, are represented. And each of those departments are allowed to select their own representative. The professional support we get is that we have a professional actuary consultant who sits in on all the negotiations, who answers the technical questions that are, that are voiced by the, by the negotiating team and understands the, the actuarial approach, which is sometimes difficult for, for the lay members of the, of the committee to understand. But honestly, I feel that this process is fairly exhaustive. And at the end of it, generally, you get the right answer. And as I say, within, we had to operate within the rules as they are currently set out. And I think that was, out of that came a reasonable, a reasonable result. And as I said, the cost was, is the greatest weighting factor. Cost obviously did impact the choice in, in fiscal 2020.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Byrne. And thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I, I do appreciate your answer, Mr. Byrne, to just help us understand how we got to this point, where we are here, trying to understand the, the fuller picture. So Sujus Massey for that. And to everyone who's here, all of the companies, the individual constituents and other stakeholders, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Legislative Secretary. I'm going to go ahead and address Mr. Frank Campillo. Did you have a follow-up to Legislative Secretary's inquiry?
Well, just about something that Mr. Byrne said. And first of all, I tell you that he's correct. You know, the team does a very good job. They're constrained by the current law. And, and that's what they have to do based on the current law. But there, and there is another thing that I like to agree with Mr. Byrne, and he said earlier, "Best is left to the individual member." And that's what you need to let the members choose. And remember that in this contract, it's one where the government of Guam employees and retirees actually participate in the payment of the premium. But, but he's correct. Best is left to the individual member to, to see which plan is best for them to have. But but he's correct, best is left to the individual member to to see which plan is best for them to have. That's all for now, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Capillo. As OAB Chair Senator Jocelyn Augustine, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Simple question, Mr. Byrne. In reference to, yes, the negotiations going on, you got the bids that are coming in. If whoever is selected, the amount that they're paying, if they were, if we were to pass this bill to allow the choice and that the cost is not is not placed on the burden of the government of Guam, but placed on the subscriber, subscriber, would you have an objection to that then if this bill was worded in that fashion?
Well, I guess, Senator, it depends how it was worded. If if you're suggesting that the subscriber pay for the entire difference between the lower, the lower lowest cost bidder, and I guess it would be the next higher cost bidder who was evaluated in a different way. I mean, I'm, that that certainly would be a choice. But it makes it makes the government's job more difficult because we still have to administer two contracts.
But when you say
The bigger concern, I think, is that both both bidders are likely to increase their pricing because they're not certain what their constituency is. That they're that they're pricing their product on the basis of our population. But if they're not certain whether they're getting a hundred percent of the government employees or fifty percent of the government employees, both of them are likely, as I mentioned in my remarks, are likely to put that into their pricing.
So you're saying that when you just mentioned a little bit earlier about how they're being evaluated. In other words, if you were to evaluate one agent, one competitor, you're not evaluating them the same across the board? You're just you just pick and choose whichever one you think is under that word best? That doesn't even sound right.
No, I don't think I said that, Senator. There were two parts to the question, right? The the first one is, can 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 we allow the employees to buy up, basically? But and and if the products are different, right, I guess employees might choose to buy up if that choice were presented to them. But what I was trying to to make sure you understood is that both bidders, because they're not sure that they're going to get a hundred percent of the the premiums available for that year, are likely to put some element of risk into their pricing.
So 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 you're 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 basically saying that, and I'm I'm trying to understand, I'm trying to be very clear, Mr. Byrne, is that everyone that puts out a bid, there's always the assumption or the hope that you would get a hundred percent. There's never a guarantee of anything. Now, if we were to pass the bill that said you had a choice, you would still hope that if you provide more service or better service, you would have the likelihood of getting an increased amount of subscribers versus hoping to get for less. I mean, that doesn't sound right, Mr. Byrne.
Yes, sir. I think it's a difference between hope and certainty. If there's one bidder, you're certain you're going to get a hundred percent of the of the employees. If you, if there's a choice, you might hope, but you're not certain that you're going to get a hundred percent of those of that choice.
Okay, because the only thing I'm I'm really concerned across the board and for everyone that's participating in this Zoom is that whoever was to win, if the amount, whatever amount is whichever wanted, the amount that the government pays, anybody that that selects to to pick to pick from another provider, the amount doesn't change. The government has a set rate. In other words, if we're paying not even a hundred dollars, but a lot more than that, but whatever we're paying, that is the minimum the governor Guam will pay. And the reason why is because we want to make sure that, like Mr. Ken Younger mentioned earlier, that the there's a big portion of the people of Guam that are paying into this. And there is a there's a large group that's in Gov Guam and retirees that are also paying. But there there's got to be some equity here where whatever the rate is, if if one 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 subscriber is this the rate they're going to charge, and this is what Gov Guam and Gov Guam was going to choose them because they're the lowest rate, and that'll be the rate. And then it's up to you as a as as an individual, if you choose to pick another health insurance, you can go to that one, then you pay the difference, not the Gov Guam. So this is a benefit, this is not a right. This is a benefit that Gov Guam provides to everybody. And and there are, there's a large population out there that are not getting that same benefit. So anyway, I thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity.
Thank you very much, Augustine. Senator Theresa Lahey, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you to everyone who's provided testimony today. So we're debating again to go back on this provision that was put in in the last term of the legislature by override. It was one of the few bills that we had overridden and after veto, of course. And and I remember when it was, who's this bill? And at the time when he had put this provision in that we were going to go for the the most economical was that it was because the retirees' health insurance had premiums had not been paid. And we were getting calls and he had received calls from retirees whose health insurance was not being covered. So they were being billed themselves because the government was not able to pay the premiums. And that that was because at that time, there was a thirteen million dollar shortfall in in the budget to cover premiums. And so when he, when they overwritten the, overwrote the bill, it was very clear that it was going to require that the the more beneficial and economical and affordable to the government plan would be would go there. And you're right, Mr. Younger, that the government at that time and now was facing political pressure, but also fiscal pressure. And I think today, I can't see how we are under any different circumstances, maybe worse when it comes to fiscal pressure because we have no real alternatives except to cut costs because we can't raise. I don't, I hope no one's considering raising any taxes at this point. So the fiscal pressures are are here on us. I I believe that. And so they're very serious. So the fiscal impacts of this bill, I think, are are very serious and require us to really, you know, be deliberate. And the fiscal note says that the choice would, at least in twenty twenty, might have had an impact of eleven percent higher. And I know Mr. Byrne testified about this, approximately eleven, eleven million dollars at eleven percent of a hundred and eight million. And so that's significant. And then the bill also says that we're going to change from choice in general to and and we're going to change from most economical rather to to a choice of two. And I guess I wanted to know if anyone could answer this, why only two? If we're talking about choice, why not, you know, in previous, it was it was one or more companies? And we're changing that to read two companies. And I I was never, I'm not sure why that is. If any of those testifying can can explain, I guess, the benefit of two versus more than two. Or, yeah, why, why are we limiting, if we want choice, why are we limiting it to two?
Mr. Cameron, would you like to answer that?
Yes, well, that question came to my mind as well, why two? And I've been here since nineteen eighty-six, and I was director of Menahoff at the time. And I've worked for four governors and three senators. And I've I've been around the block, so to speak, in circles, sometimes not figuring out where where my head is, only because there's a quackmire of thoughts just jumping all over Guam. But in this case, that is a statement of fact. In the past, we've had choice, not just with one or two. We've had choice in the past where we had GMHP, and we know that has caused some concerns when they spiral, what we call a death spiral. We had StayWell, we had NetCare, we had we had Take Care, we had Select Care, now we have Aetna. And I think it it became quite competitive. And I I want to share with you that it was so refreshing to step away from the negotiation table, even in a choice environment. And we actually came back to our folks in the government family and to the people of Guam that we saved millions. And that can be done. And I tend to to gravitate to some of the thoughts of Ken Longaro that are are sage advice. And I would like very much to hear more from from him on how we can produce a balance that does not shoulder the 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 indigent population that have no opportunities for health insurance. And they they're really just at the at the frills. They're they're hurting. And we don't want to impact them in such a way that they're hurting more. I believe choice can be very competitive, and that competition has to be managed in a in a fashion that allows for what we want at the end of the day is that we're having affordable insurance. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Capillo, I will address you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker. And Senator Lahey, I think I answered that question to you at one of the hearings about two or three months ago. We, in our side, we we support any willing provider that has the qualifications and passes through the qualifications legal test that the government of Guam has. So for us, if you, if it is expanded, then more than two, that's okay. We're not, we're not asking or we're not saying that it should be limited to two.
All right. All right, thank you. Yeah, my understanding is that prior to that override of the current, you know, so that got us to the current law that we had, so the letters that were going to the governor every year after negotiations would it would show an exclusive option and a non-exclusive option. And almost always, I mean, I think always, the exclusive option was cheaper because they were banking on, you know, more, like in bulk, more customers. So they could, they could give it for a lower rate. And if we, if we come up with any compromise that takes away their guarantee of all the customers there, as Mr. Byrne testified earlier, they're going to be bidding higher to make up for that potential loss because they can't predict exactly how many customers they will lose to the competing companies. So I think it it's a, it's not a guaranteed guarantee, but it's very likely that choice is going to raise the prices or raise the cost to the government of Guam. And and the, well, overall, the overall cost, let's just say that. Because it's also my understanding that in the end, the governor has the choice of how the costs are divvied up between provide government of Guam and employee. So that's another, that's not on the table today, but that's also one of the factors that comes into this. So, Mr. Byrne, you had said that if there are deficiencies in the in a contract performance, that there are options, and one of them, you said, was HR benefits. That's a, that's a Department of Administration department, you mean, HR, that we should go there and talk about our benefits and our complaints?
Yes, Senator, and and some some employees and retirees do.
All right. And and have you has GOA been able to address complaints for the current provider, current contract, health insurance contract?
Yes, Senator.
And as you said earlier, there are complaints with every provider, I mean, health insurance contract that we've had. I was, I'm also curious, I guess, if you could answer this. When we talk about choice for for consumers, the choice I often think about is choice of providers, like meaning doctors. Which doctor can I go to? Which hospital can I go to versus which health insurance company, right? I think more important to me mostly would be which doctor can I go to? In fact, that's how I would choose my insurance company is which doctor can I go to and which hospital is covered. And can I ask then, so in your twenty twenty contract, what were the big changes in providers? I I thought I went to the orientation seminar or forum that they had, and they said that all the providers that were nor that were covered in the prior contracts would be covered under this contract. Is that the case? Was that correct? Or did the providers change significantly?
Generally, that that was the case, but with the obviously inclusion of GRMC for all providers, which was different from the previous year.
Were there, were there any providers that were added?
Added to what?
Covered that were not covered before, well, in addition to GRMC for some provider, for some companies. Were there other hospitals that, you know, around the world that that were additionally covered?
Well, yes, around the world, yes. I I I struggle to say there were any providers added on Guam. But around the world, the current provider, being a US-based company, has contracts with many, many hospitals and other providers in the States. So those certainly were added.
All right. And I heard Mr. Zimmerman talk about where he went, I think Vietnam. All right. And so then and then you said, Mr. Byrne, that the the bids or the the bids had already been submitted for for the current negotiations, and those are pretty much closed. And that if we pass this bill, we would be interfering with your current process. You'd have to start again?
I always shy away from the word interfering because it always, I see it in in law, and it it always strikes me as being unfortunate. But certainly, it would disrupt the current process because we have received the bids under the current RFP.
All right. And and I heard you say that's what happened last year, and that's why we relate in our orientation processes and kind of rushing. All right. But what about, Mr. Capillo, you also gave, and you've also, you've always done this for us, and I thank you. You've always given us options for the government to, you know, contain costs. And so one of them, you said, was Medicare rates, to tie it to Medicare rates. So, Mr. Byrne, how does our current, I don't know, contract compare to Medicare rates? Or does it? I mean, is that, is that something we can compare right now, or it's not applicable here?
It's kind of a hard comparison to make, but I would suspect that the insured rates are, I I think that's why Mr. Capello mentioned it, the insured rates are in fact higher than Medicare rates. And most providers, and I think this is certainly the experience of GMH, most providers cannot rely upon Medicare or Medicare-type rates to recover their costs.
They, did you say they cannot?
Cannot, yes.
Cannot because the Medicare rates are lower. Okay. What about?
So if I may, Senator, answer a couple of questions. And again, you were saying a suggestion. The state of North Carolina has gone on that route, and it's something that if Guam would consider, clearly has to be properly evaluated. But going back to the previous point that you made, even when there were various companies in the market, the government of Guam actually received rebates, at least from us. And I don't think those rebates were adjusted to see how much the price would have been when you subtracted the government of Guam rebates because the eighty-six percent was not met, you know. So even when there were various players, the government of Guam received rebates in their premiums.
Let's say that one, that last part again, even when there
So even when there were multiple providers, for instance, I think you had StayWell, you had Take Care, and then you had Cabo Select Care. Even at that time, the government of Guam must issue rebates, at least from our side. We rebate it to the government of Guam.
And rebates come more, I'm sorry, Mr. Byrne, to do.
Sorry, sorry. I I didn't mean to interrupt. It's sometimes hard with this. I I didn't mean to to discount. I didn't mean to discount tying it to Medicare, tying the premiums to the rates, to Medicare rates. But I think it's going to be a bit of an adjustment, especially for providers.
For the doctors, they wouldn't like their rates to be less than what they are today, probably.
That would be my guess, yes.
And that's the reason why I said you got to get up all the persons and everyone involved in the community to make the decision, you know, that includes the medical community, of course. It's only a suggestion, only a suggestion to the different things that governments have tried to do to adjust cost.
All right, I understand it. And one year, I know we discussed putting a cap on the insurance, but my understanding was that putting a cap on how much the government's going to pay is going to in turn, because of inflation for the health insurance companies, they might in turn give us bids with less than all the benefits that we wanted.
Well, in the past, you used to have, yeah, correct, and you have a minimum set of benefits. And then you allow the insurance companies to either design and improve on those benefits, change those benefits based on what consumers want, but it still allow the consumer, the individual member, as Mr. Byrne said earlier, to decide which one is best for them and decide which plan and what is best for them on their minds.
But the government requirement, like in the RFP, is a minimum of benefits. We start with a minimum of benefits and then we get pricing on that. And some, maybe some companies add in additional benefits.
That is, that is correct to a point, but to a certain degree, those minimums have actually changed. In fact, the government of Guam may not even have control as to what those minimums are. For instance, USPSTF, which is basically your annual free cover medical exams, you know, has changed and continued to change and continue to add new benefits on an annual basis. In fact, I'm one of those that believe that once we get a vaccine for COVID, that USTSPF would probably require COVID to be covered as a Schedule A or B or USTF.
All right. Well, yeah, okay. So I'm just, thank you. I appreciate that. And so what about as another, so that's like two strategies of containing costs other than what we're doing now, self-insurance as an option, is this anywhere possible, Mr. Byrne, or not?
The current Guam code does provide for the ability to have self-insurance. And, you know, I'm trying to encourage the committee to actually look at that more closely. We do have self-insurance for our dental plan. It was deemed to be less risky because we actually have a cap on the, we do have a cap on the benefits in the dental plan. So we did self-insure the dental plan as a kind of pilot scheme to see if we could go further and consider self-insurance for the medical part of the policy as well.
Who did you say, Mr. Byrne, is working on, you said somebody's working on that, or?
No, the committee needs to consider it.
Oh, okay.
It's something which, which I say, the current code does, does mention that in due course, we should probably go to some kind of self-insurance. I mean, that means all sorts of different things to different people. But what, the principle that you're trying to get to is to reduce your cost by, by, first of all, you're writing your own policy, so you can, you can change the benefits to be absolutely tailored to your, your, your policy. And also your, your cash flow improves because you're not paying out the premiums monthly to a carrier, you're just paying out the claims as they occur.
Thank you. Senator Theresa, I'm going to go.
Yes, thank you.
Just yield to Mr. Cameron, who wanted to also chime in on your previous questions. Joe, I'm going to acknowledge you.
Thank you. I won't make this long, my dear people. You know, as I understood it, 86% of each premium dollar, now, correct me if I'm wrong, is mandated to go towards claims. Otherwise, the premium is refunded to the government of Guam for the difference. So I'm thinking, as I hear it, there is a clause in the contract that mandates that claim costs must reach 86% of the total premium collected. Otherwise, the insurance company must return the excess premium to the government of Guam. So I'm asking if this is still accurate, therefore, doesn't that ensure that overcharging the government of Guam is not achievable? I'm thinking that we kind of skipped over Frank's point, which should be, you cannot overcharge the government of Guam. So the overhead costs, as I understand it, and the risk and profit must be all fit into the 14% for the insurance company. Is, Byrne?
Well, yes, that's true, but in the last two years, we did not get any premium return because the insurance companies reported that the claims that they incurred were higher than the premiums that they earned. So we didn't get anything back. But I, I think it's kind of missing the point there that, you know, when you, when you decide what your target is, then you, then you can't suffer more than 86% of it. What we're trying to do here is to decide what the financial target actually should be. It could be 100 and you get back, and the claims be 86, or it could be 110, and then the, the claims would total 90.
Thank you very much, Mr. Byrne. Senator Theresa, I'm going to still acknowledge you.
Yeah, thank you, Speaker. My last question is just, okay, so the bill is changing that we are going to contract with, instead of one or more, we're going to contract with the top two. And, and, but under the current law, Mr. Byrne, isn't it true that, that under the current law, the most economical and beneficial healthcare insurance proposal plan for the government could be a non-exclusive proposal, meaning not just one company? Yeah, it's, the language of the law currently says that it could be more than one company who, who are the lowest, most economical proposal.
Yes, Senator, that's true, but it wasn't the experience that we had last year. And as I also said in my remarks, you know, we're, we're here talking this only eight months into the first period of the new legislation.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much to Mr. Campillo, Mr. Byrne, Mr. Longaro, Mr. Cameron.
Thank you, Senator Cholahi. Minority Leader, you are recognized at this time.
Deidre Massey, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I was wondering, I heard there was a petition that was out there that was generated, quite a bit of individuals have signed on it in opposition of the way they've been treated, well, in opposition of a net. Do you have that petition? Aetna, the one, yeah, for Aetna.
In opposition?
Yes, opposition, not in opposition of the bill, but, you know, it was in favor of the bill, but the issues that they're having with Aetna, do you have that petition? I heard there was over 1,000 signatures on that petition. I was just wondering, I've been looking through the documents that you provided, and I didn't see anything like that. Is there a petition that is generating?
Yes, Minority Leader, I will yield that question back to Mr. Campillo. He may have the answer to the petition that was forwarded to the author. Mr. Campillo?
Yes, there was a petition, and again, you know, that petition was many members coming to us, and no different than what members or constituents of the mayors did by promoting and getting the mayors to have a resolution and pass a resolution for choice.
I am, yes, I'm also aware of that resolution by the mayor's office as well. And, but I would really like to see that petition that was generated and see how many people, maybe the author of the bill has that, and if we can avail ourselves to that, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Minority Leader. Yes, it was submitted and it will be appended to today's committee report. I will submit a copy to you. Mr. Campillo, can we just make sure that those copies be transmitted, officially electronically transmitted, it would be probably easier for you if it hasn't already done so? I think there was over 1,500 members?
Yes, Madam Speaker, and we will provide those to you. I think you already have been giving those with our letter.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, I appreciate it. I mean, just have that many people concerned or has issues with the current insurance company. We need to pause here and find out what's really going on. I know that, you know, it comes to, Mr. Byrne, you've heard that saying, even though you're from England, you ever hear that saying, penny wise but a dollar short?
I think the English version, Senator, is penny wise, pound foolish.
Oh, pound foolish. I have to say dollar short, pound foolish, penny wise. Yeah, the English version, right? But here we say a dollar short, you know. But that, that being said, you know, if you look at what's going on here, it's, we're seeing that kind of issue where even though it is the cheaper way to go, we're seeing people not getting their claims paid off. We're seeing there, there's a lot of individuals who are very upset with referrals and having to wait. And when you're in a health crisis and you need to get that referral right away and you don't get it, that's like very, very hard, that individual. So we know that there's, there's a lot of issues going on right now with our current one. And I think that I'd love to see a win-win situation here. I also like this to go back to Mr. Byrne, to look at the intent where we went from a choice to just one, where we took like the $21 million from cost, came from, I think, TakeCare, and configured that on a basis of savings. And that's kind of, you know, doing that kind of mathematics on that is really not true to form when you're taking something so low and trying to say that we're going to save X amount from that amount. I don't think it would be very helpful. But I'm looking for a win-win situation on here. Having ensuring that, you know, not only that referrals are through, but the claims, you know, having insurance companies report claims records is, it's very disheartening. Especially, you know, I then went through a scenario of being very sick and having to get my referrals or getting my three months checkup and having difficult time with this insurance company personally, compared to the one that we have. And what makes it so much better here, I think, is that having that choice, if you want to deal with getting on a phone and being for somebody to answer your call, and you're in dire need of some medical care versus being able to go just down the street from an insurance company that pays here, that'd be very easy for you to knock on the door and ask for assistance. I think we need to put that in perspective versus, you know, really, the amount of money versus what's important to your health is something I think the negotiating team should bear in mind.
Well, yes, Senator, you know, this bill is not about the performance of this particular carrier at this time. The bill is more general than that. So I don't want to go too much into, into the performance of Aetna or its predecessor carriers in the previous years. I heard, I heard that there was, you know, a petition. I too would like to see that. But if there are 1,500 signatures, does that mean there are 14,000 satisfied people?
I'm not sure, but I do know that if you get that many people complaining about something, it's something that we need to pause to. And with all due respect, I think that the reason why we're here today is because of those signatures, because of the government employees very unhappy. We heard from McDonald earlier, who's very sick, you know, and issues are coming. I've heard from other constituents who've called my office saying that it was supposed to be reimbursed three months ago and still have not received it. So I'm just saying that we're here to do because of all these complaints that we're having. And it's important that we become penny wise, not a pound, or as we in America, they are dollar short. And I just think that, I know we're already what eight months into this negotiations for NUI, but because of that, I don't think it's a good excuse for us not to look at this scenario over here. You know, really, the way I see it too, it's insurance companies that will lose out. It was brought up earlier by Senator Theresa Cholahi about how the insurance companies will lose money if they actually go in a choice, because they don't know how many people are going to sign with their company or the second choice. So they're seeking it right there. So I think that we just need to come to a win-win. I hear what Mr. Leon Guerrero was saying, the concerns he has. But until you're very sick and you go into a situation where you need somebody to answer your call right away, and it's a matter of life or death, and you're told you have to wait for that nobody's answering your call. I think Guam has been spoiled because we've had that opportunity to go directly to the insurance company, knock on their door and ask them for help. And they've done nothing more than to be accommodating versus what we're having to see right now and we're having to experience right now when it comes to healthcare on this island. And unfortunately, it's been failing us. And if it means that we provide our government of Guam employees, provide this public service to our island, it's important to them that we provide them excellent care, healthcare. So thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity.
And if I may clarify something, Mr. Byrne, the petition is not about who's better or who's worse. It's not about one health plan or the other. It's basically about choice. In fact, one of the petitioners says, I was insured with company X and X, but I still would like to have choice. So it's not about better or worse between the companies, it's about choice.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I look forward to reviewing it when it gets attached to the testimony.
Yeah, thank you very much. I just want to note to my colleagues and to everyone listening that the petitions were uploaded and put on previously, and it should be online. If not, you can personally email our office and we'll get the petitions transferred to, or emailed to you, electronically provided to you. I don't see Senator Mary Torres, so I'll go ahead and move forward with Senator Will Castro. You are recognized.
I thank you, Madam Speaker. I sent in the main chat, just a quick note, and perhaps DOA, in the interest of time, can go ahead and respond to me via email, Mr. Byrne. That'll be willcastro671@gmail.com. And I'll go ahead and send you a direct message about a follow-up. So my two questions for DOA are as follows. The first question is, is there a reason why we are negotiating the health insurance contracts on an annual basis as opposed to a triennial basis? That would be my first question. And then my second question that I made out of here is, is there, is there a reason why it wouldn't be in our best interest to negotiate these health insurance contracts as one government, as opposed to maybe the judiciary negotiating theirs and the executive and legislative branches negotiating theirs? And so, while I know you're prepared to answer that question at some length, I prefer that maybe you get back to me in writing and I share with my colleagues, because I want to enter three points into the record, Madam Speaker.
Please do.
Thank you. You know, I was reviewing the bill and I took note of the proposal. There's reference language in the bill that says, refers to economical and beneficial. And, you know, while it's couched in the overall language, looking for the best proposals, that's the actual language there, you know, I just bring to light, Madam Speaker, that, I don't know, I feel that sometimes what's the most economical is not always as beneficial for the individual consumer, someone like me as an example. At the same time, I think the opposite is true. You know, you can have something on this hand that's a lot more beneficial, but it's out of my reach. And I think to many of the points that were presented to, to, in this public hearing, that I think choice would enable that, for you to be able to make that individual decision between what is economical or beneficial or balanced. And I can only use my life as an example. or beneficial or balanced. And I can only use my life as an example in, in terms of, I, I had a car and it was very beneficial to me for a lot of different reasons. And, and I had to sell it because I couldn't, I couldn't make other ends meet, like, like wishing for my son as an example. But I can tell you that while it's economical, this new Jeep that I have, it doesn't have air con. It certainly isn't as safe as that other car I had. It's not as old. This new Jeep is seventeen years old. And it certainly isn't as beneficial for everybody else riding in the back because there are no windows. And so my point would be, I can make those value judgments for myself as an individual consumer between plans and determine if I want something a little more economic or a little more beneficial or a common, or hopefully you find that sweet spot that, that meets almost all of that. But I just, I'm just concerned that, you know, tying economical to beneficial is a criterion. I don't know. I don't know if that's going to work or get the desired outcome. So that's my first point. My second point, Madam Speaker, would be bringing, bringing light to ensuring that we have no less than two. Now, I'm not sure why we're choosing two. I think it could be top three. For me personally, it's anything better than just one, I think, would allow us the opportunity to make that decision that I just talked about earlier. So I appreciate you including in the bill specifically the top two on page one, the language quote, the top two and quote on page nine seven. And see that, that reference again, or similar language that says, quote, the best two, end quote, on page two, line nineteen. And so my point with highlighting that, Madam Speaker, would be to reinforce what I believe to be the central intent of the bill, which is to give the individual consumer the opportunity to choose for themselves. And then my third and final point, Madam Speaker, is that if we're able to wrap this up, and, and I'm in no way encouraging us to speed this through, but once we, once your, your committee and once the body determines it to be fit and we implement, we pass it, that it be hopefully implemented at the beginning of this fiscal year, the upcoming fiscal year. And so thank you, Madam Speaker, for allowing me to present my three points. I do have a letter prepared to send to you that, that reflects that. And thank you again, Mr. Byrne and DOA for your time. And I hope that you can get back to me via email. It's the same email you've used when you served, that I used when you served in the Calvo administration. So thank you, everybody, for participating. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Castro and Mr. Byrne. If you may, those questions go, please go ahead and refer also a copy to the Oversight Chair. With that, yes. I want to share as I am the last speaker on, on this bill that I want to take the time to thank all of you for testifying today. And I want to share that all of you have come to the table and worked on an out-of-box solution. I want to say that I commend all of you for working with the main author of this bill. I must say that the government has always stood by our employees and our people of Guam. So again, I want to thank, say thank you to all the stakeholders and the experts who are here today. I want to also share that I strongly believe, from my experience in the private sector, that for your business to be prosperous, you must take care of your employees. And to my knowledge, you cannot be a successful businessman if you don't take care of your people, of your employees. And if you don't give them the healthcare. I think it's even humane if you don't take care of them. The Committee on Public Accountability and on Human Resources will continue to explore our options for the thirty thousand-plus strong government of Guam familia and to the one thousand five hundred-plus individuals who shared their sentiments with my office and also I know to the author of this legislation, Don Quinones Jesus Massey for sharing your thoughts. But more importantly, I want to make sure that I look through all the messages and make sure that we, we take this bill and, and provide whatever measures and protocols that it needs to either be facilitated or there's any changes. So I want to make sure that we have an understanding, though there may be some folks out there who may not agree. We can agree to disagree, but it's important that we look at the consensus of the majority of the people. And again, it is, it is my effort as the Oversight Chair of Human Resources to make sure that when a concern like this is brought up, that it.
Can I make one last point, Senator?
Yes, I'll address you at this time before I close. Please proceed.
If I can, if I can just leave the final thought for the committee is that, for instance, I understand St. Luke's also made a trip to Guam and they met with various senators and, and other administration officials. And they talk about choices. And some of the reasons why they did that is because St. Luke's in, in the Philippines made changes for the people of Guam, not because they wanted to make changes, but because we insisted on them. And I said, when we, is we, select here, insisted in them making changes to make sure that they apply and they were made to accommodate the needs of the people of Guam. So when you talk about choices, it's because maybe we understand this market a little better. And that's the reason why many of the government of Guam employees are saying, give us a choice. And St. Luke's also came here and, and I believe that they're asking also many of you to give them a choice, to give the employees of the government of Guam and retirees a choice. And if I can leave you for that, Speaker and the rest of you, thank you very much. Stay safe, all of you. Thank you for today.
Thank you very much, Frank. I also want to note that it is important that invitations on this bill was sent out to all other carriers and to the public for today's input. And again, extend my thank yous for everybody who came here to testify during this several hours or couple of hours, at least two and a half hours. I will call Bill number two fifty-five dash thirty-five COR publicly heard. If those wishing to extend and to provide written testimony, please do so by sending it to speaker@guamlegislature.org or delivering a hard copy to one sixty-three Chalong Santa Papan, Hagania, Guam, nine six nine one oh. Ladies and gentlemen, we still have one more bill on the agenda. I do want to thank those who testified on Bill two fifty-five. If you need to leave now, you're more than welcome to do so. We have one more bill on the agenda. It is Bill two three eight dash thirty-five COR, an act to add a new section of four one three one to chapter four, title four, Guam Code Annotated, relative to authorizing administrative leave for first responders affected by the disease outbreak. It was introduced by Senator Kelly Marsh Titel and Senator Jose Pito Turlahi. Again, this is Bill number three two eight dash thirty-five. And before I call the presenters to speak, I would like to give an opportunity to my vice chair, who is the author of this bill, to say her opening statement before I call in the parties. Vice Chair, you are recognized.
Sutus Massey, Madam Speaker, and Sutus Massey to Senator Pito Turlahi for being a co-sponsor. He has oversight over a lot of our first responders. And so it was very important to include him. So we've been seeing as we've been living through these times, these last couple of months or longer, if we take the longer term view, that we've developed new terms during this worldwide pandemic. COVID-19 heroes. We've seen illustrations of nurses, doctors and others propping up the U.S. flag. Countless of us have been taking the time to give shout-outs and thank yous to those that support all the different aspects of COVID-19 efforts. We've gained a new appreciation for essential workers. As first responders or frontliners, while most of us have been sheltering at home or are now starting to go out with a bit of caution and, and our social distancing, they are still out there and they have been out there. This bill recognizes and provides support to them for being out there at the front line on behalf of all of us. For the bill, it recognizes first responders and it takes into consideration that in their line of duty, if they contract or have symptoms of COVID-19 or they've been otherwise exposed that causes them to have to be quarantined or to self-quarantine or going forward, any other disease that's part of a, a state of emergency, a public health emergency like this. It allows that period of time for hospitalization. I don't know why I'm stumbling on that word, but or their quarantine to be covered with administrative leave. Should they have her or his inability, excuse me, their ability to work be challenged and it, it be work-related. The first responder shall receive administrative leave for the amount of time that she or he is unable to perform her or his duties as a result of the disease infection. The first responder shall not have to be required to use their sick or their annual leave or compensatory time to cover the said period of absence. So this supportive administrative leave is the right thing to do. First responders or frontliners are protecting us. We must protect them. They are on the front line, coming into close contact or potentially coming into close contact with those that are infected. We cannot hold it against them or ask them to sacrifice precious personal or other leave to accommodate the risk that they take on behalf of all of us. Provisions of this leave may be happening in practice, but we want to make sure that it is set in law, which, so that it is not vulnerable. Setting it in law better secures recognition and application towards protecting our frontliners. Sutus Massey, Madam Speaker, for letting me have that opening time to, to share those perspectives about the bill.
Thank you. I do want to note to my colleagues that there will be a break that we would have to, if we see the three forty-five, it's mark. So right now it's three oh three. I will ask those who are here to present, I have Mr. Byrne, or I don't see him right now. Oh, there he is. Mr. Byrne and Mike Chenep here to speak on Bill three two eight. So I'll go ahead and give you guys the opportunities time, Mr. Byrne.
Speaker, with your consent, I'll ask Mr. Snip to read the testimony. But also with your consent, if either of us can answer questions afterwards, that would be appreciated.
Definitely, Mr. Byrne. Thank you for asking. And I'll go ahead and acknowledge Mr. Michael Chenep, please.
All right. Hafiday, Madam Speaker, and other speakers in the committee. We would like to thank you for the opportunity to provide comments on Bill three two eight thirty-five, which is an act to add a new section, four one three one, to chapter four, title four of the Guam Code Annotated, relative to authorizing administrative leave for first responders affected by the disease outbreak. Although the Department of Administration understands what this bill is attempting to accomplish, we would like to express that we are not in favor as it will create a disparity between first responders and non-first responders as well as an inequity amongst all government of Guam employees who, while in line of duty, contracts, has symptoms of or otherwise become affected by a disease outbreak, including but not limited to the novel coronavirus twenty nineteen. Our department would be amendable in the development of a policy that will be fair and equitable to all line government of Guam employees who may become affected by a disease outbreak through the adoption of rules and regulations in accordance with four GCA forty-one oh one A. We would like to thank you for the opportunity to express our comments on Bill three twenty-eight dash thirty-five and hope that you consider them. If you have any questions, I'm, I'm here to answer.
Sutus Massey, Mr. Chenep, I'll go ahead and work, circle back to the author of the legislation to ask questions. Senator Marsh, do you have a question or comment at this time for Mr. Byrne and Mr. Chenep?
Sutus Massey, Madam Speaker, yes. And certainly we had in mind that we wanted to broaden this bill as he was saying to, you know, we wrote this very early on before we were seeing frontliners out there and we were seeing what essential workers were doing and we were understanding how this was going to play out. And so we are thinking very much in line with what Mr. Chenep mentioned. And certainly there have been those that have been reaching out to us from the National Guard and from elsewhere wanting to make sure that they are included and having family that have been, well, you know, it seemed to me that some of them were actually dealing with some of their family having to remove themselves from the workplace. And so for, for the time that we've been thinking of this, in those ensuing weeks, it was with the intention of broadening it. And we wanted to have this hearing process to best understand how to broaden it so that we are indeed taking care of our essential workers. And that's one of the reasons why I said first responders, but also just frontliners. We've come to understand how essential workers, there's a whole broad array of them and they're all important towards making sure that life can continue and they are putting themselves at risk. So I appreciate those comments very much. And as I said, they're very much in line with what we were thinking.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair. At this time, Vice Speaker, do you have any questions for DOA? Legislative Secretary?
I don't have any questions at this time, but thank you very much for your testimony and for sticking around with us the last couple of hours.
You're very welcome. Next up is, I see Senator Pito. Do you have any questions?
Michael, are you saying that, you know, this, this bill would be in conflict with the rules and regulations set up by DOA?
Hafiday, Senator. Hafiday, Senator. I'm not saying that it's in conflict with the personal rules and regs, but what we want to do is in terms of, we want to ensure that there's equity, equity amongst all those who are reporting to work, especially, especially during a pandemic outbreak. So if we are going to put something out, we want to make sure that everyone is covered equally so that we don't have any potential conflicts or grievances that an individual may go to the Civil Service Commission because they weren't afforded the same opportunity as a first, first responder, such as a firefighter or such as myself, who's coming into work during this pandemic in turn response. So we want to make sure that all employees are covered equally.
So, so you're saying that we change the bill to, to make that not an option, but to cover employees that support the COVID, the COVID-19 operations? That all employees not frontline, but also employees that, that support the, you know, the, the task that is being given under, you know, what they need to do?
Correct. But I would refer to my director, the Department of Administration Director, so that way we can discuss. But it definitely would, definitely make it where it's equal for all those who are essential workers reporting to work during a pandemic outbreak.
So maybe the author can consider that and put that as part of the bill.
Any other questions, July?
No.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Minority Leader, do you have a question?
Sutus Massey, Madam Chair. Yes, so, you know, I wish, Mike, I wish I had your testimony in front of me because then I could just read it again and not have you to repeat it. But from what I gather, it, okay, you, have you actually, Michael Redd or Mr. Byrne, have you read the fiscal note? have you read the fiscal note for this bill? Has anybody?
I have, but I don't, I don't, I've, sorry, I don't recall the details of it.
How about you, Mike? Okay.
No, no, I'm sorry. No, I haven't read it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Minority Leader, comments as it relates to BBMR's notes? There are several...
Oh, I have, yeah, I have, no, I have a copy. I was just wondering if the administration had the opportunity to read the fiscal note from BBMR. That, that's all. And based on your testimony, you're not in favor of the bill as written? I mean, I'm in favor of, you know, providing any kind of assistance to those who are out there, and especially if you're, if you become infected with this pandemic. But the thing is, how can you tell if you're infected if you're on the job? So, if you're contemplating that, if you got infected while you're on the job, or you could have been out shopping and getting infected there. So, I don't know how you guys are going to go into your rules and regs to try and make this, you know, conducive to help individuals receive this kind of compensation for administrative leave instead of sick leave. I do know that there's an issue when it comes down to, especially with people on the old benefits, how they're able to get compensated based on that and the payout for sick leave. There are a lot of issues. I agree with this bill. However, I, I do support the intent of it, and I'm looking forward to your testimony again to look through it and to be able to provide, I, I think if you can, to provide any other solutions that would make this bill, you know, stronger and would, would give that parity amongst everybody in the government of Guam, too. So, looking forward to your suggestions as well. That's all, really no other questions, Madam Speaker. Just looking forward to their testimony.
Sizos Maasi, Minority Leader. Senator Will Castro, you're recognized.
No questions or comments at this time. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Senator. I do have a couple, maybe a question and maybe a recommendation, and I hope I'm asking this right. If a first responder to Mike or Mr. Byrne, if a, if a first responder is defined under 10GCA Section 84102 GG encompasses not only local but federal personnel, does the Guam Legislature have the authority to grant federal first responders administrative leave?
Well, actually, Madam Speaker, I think there is a difficulty that needs resolving here. The 10GCA 84102 GG talks about federal, state, and local governments, emergency, public safety, law enforcement, it goes on. But it also embraces the definition in 6USC 101, which includes non-governmental responders. So, I certainly recommend that we, that we plow through these words and try and resolve them so we're absolutely clear who the legislation should refer to.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that, 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 that be considered or looked at, and then the recommendation to limit the scope of first responders to local personnel, then a notwithstanding clause should be added to bypass the Homeland Security Act of 2002 provision under the 10GCA. So, that is why the question was broached, to make sure. And again, as we move forward, making sure that the opportunity for any and all first responders should be included is something that we can look at and step outside the clock, out of the box. I do note that based on the BBR, BBMR's fiscal note to us that they cannot provide an approximate financial impact of the bill due to the conditions and requirements of the bill. I just want to say that, that they also note that there are several indirect impacts of the proposed legislation, such as more sick leave hours that will be applied, either through a lump sum payment on retirement, should the employee be a part of the defined contribution retirement plan, and years of service should the employee be part of the defined benefit retirement plan as, or defined benefit 1.75 retirement plan. So, again, these are all the other comments or impacts that should be considered as we move forward. The intent of the bill for me personally is, is, is something that we definitely could look at for the hard-working responders, first responders, especially during any kind of outbreak pandemic or any other catastrophe or condition that happens within our island and to be able to prepare for that. So, with that being said, are there anyone else of my colleagues have any other comments or questions before I call this public hearing heard? If not...
I have, I have one thing to say, Madam Speaker. This is one of the reasons why we want it in terms of HR on our team. We want to have it done via policy versus law. What we are finding out is on the federal government, they have good definitions in terms of what an essential worker is and what there are not. Unfortunately, on the government of Guam side, we do lack that. So, what our team has been doing is we've been researching other states and jurisdictions to try and, and basically fine-tune that, so that way, when, should we come up to another pandemic, we're not here again, you know, and making these changes by law. So, having it in a policy, we're able to modify it as whatever the pandemic comes, comes out to. And what we've been finding in a lot of states, they're having the same issues as well. So, this is why on the family first, on the federal side, they made an amendment to the FMLA to include for those on first responders, such as school closures, parents who can't come into work and things of that. So, we want to try and get everything as much as together and come up with that solution and have that policy, so that way it covers everyone across the board equally.
Thank you. Mike, based on that, that testimony that you just provided, are you looking at a timeline sooner than later for these action items that you want to work with? And how far deep into you are with you and D O A working with, with both the federal government and our stakeholders for Guam?
We are working on it. I think we can try and do something, maybe by before the end of the week, maybe Wednesday or Thursday, to put that information in there as well.
I, I, I hope, I'm surprised. Thank you very much for, for going to have a fast response to this. I think it's really important. Again, as we look at opportunities to see what we can do to help our first responders, I think that's also important, but also to make sure that this is inclusive and that the legislature is within the parameters to work with what is out there as it relates to the federal government and to the government of Guam. And so, I just want to say thank you again for the testimony and for my colleagues who took the time to be with me as the Oversight Chair and my Vice Chair since 1 o'clock this afternoon. I want to say Dankluna Sizos Maasi. And with no further testimony or that's going to be presented from anybody...
Madam Speaker, will you make my closing statement?
Sure. I will give my Vice Chair the opportunity.
It'll only take a couple of minutes, I promise, it's short.
Yeah, but I will afford you that opportunity, Vice Chair. Please proceed.
Sizos Maasi, Madam Chair. So, Sizos Maasi, to all of those who did hang out for the last third hour or so of our testimony, I appreciate that very much. And I want to say a large thank you for your support and the intent of the bill and the desire to have this kind of application towards the government of Guam workers. That kind of support from all of us is really important. And it's always an important part of the process to hear from those that are in the affected fields, so that together, we're strengthening the bill as we just experienced regarding the previous bill that took a couple of hours prior to this. It was so important to hear from the healthcare industries, from the constituents, and from negotiating team members. So, if I can just mention again some of the main parts, that it's important for us to do what we can as a government to protect those that are protecting us. And just with the thought of, we're asking them to sacrifice in a variety of ways. We have certain things going on out there about contact, contact tracing and other things that can help us address some of these issues. And certainly, we can figure out ways to make sure that we are taking care of our employees as they're going out there and they're opening up their offices, but are just out there at the forefront, especially those first responders of a whole variety of sorts, those essential workers. So, again, Madam Chair, Sizos Maasi, and all those who came and testified and provided input, and all the questions from the fellow senators.
Thank you. Sizos Maasi, Vice Chair. With that being said, if there's no one left to testify on this public hearing on the appointment of Robert C. Titino to serve as a member of the Civil Service Commission for the term length of six years to, on Bill Number 255-35, is introduced by Senator Pito Terlali and Tina Rose Munya Barnes, and for Bill Number 328-35COR is introduced by Kelly Marsh Titino and Senator Jose Pito Terlali. These bills and appointments have been duly heard of the public hearing. For anyone wishing to submit, again, written testimony, they can do so by sending it to speaker@guamlegislature.org, or you may hand-deliver it to 163 Chalan Santa Pampa, Hagatna, Guam, 96910. And this public hearing is adjourned. It is 4:22 PM. God bless, and thank you for attending this public hearing. Sina Maasi.